Of the Seminole County Board of County Commissioners. This meeting is being viewed in person at the BCC Chambers on SGTV, on YouTube, and by registering to participate in a Zoom webinar. Residents can provide public comment in person or by registering to speak on the Seminole County website and the Board of County Commissioners webpage. There you will find a link to register for the webinar entitled "Meeting/Webinar Registration and Helpful Hints." If you are unable to join via computer or online, interested parties should call 407-665-0808 for additional information on how to participate via telephone. We will take public comment on each item as it appears on the agenda. In order to be recognized to speak, if you are using a computer or iPad, you will need to use the raise hand feature, or if calling in on a telephone, you need to press star nine. If you are attending the meeting in person, you'll be required to wear a mask and social distance. If you do not have a mask, one will be provided for you. Also, please silent, all cell phones and other electronic devices. We're going to have three items on the work session this morning. The first one will be Sun Rail, and I am going to call on Mr. Chipoff to lead us off, please.
Thank you.
And speak up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to...
I will let Chairman Delory, or Commissioner Delory, lead off.
I'd like to take the lead in a moment, just introduce it.
Sure.
I felt it was important, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, I feel it's important to get direction from the board. There are several decisions that are going to be coming up with Sun Rail as we move forward with the transition and the transition committee that we've all hired, the five entities. Our staff has been working very diligent, not just with the other partners, but with DOT. And there are some options, but in order to move forward, I need to make sure that I'm understanding where the board's at so that we can move forward together and not just as an individual, because I do represent the entire board. And so that's why I asked for this work session, and I know that Paul and John Dredge, Paul Chipoff, excuse me, Paul, and John Dredge have been very involved with the other funding partners, and I'd like for them to take lead in this. And from this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Chipoff.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Chipoff.
Thank you very much. For the record, Paul Chipoff, Deputy County Attorney, and if you could start the presentation. We've been working on Sun Rail and knowing that the transition is coming. The date of the transition has been at issue. Originally, DOT had slated it for May of 2021. The issue of the completion of Phase Two North took about a year and a half of time. Given the COVID situation, the DOT, and actually, the governor issued an order that DOT's budget was to be completely reorganized. The premise prior to that order was that with Phase Two North, if the federal money of the $34 million was not used on Phase Two North, then it could be used on other aspects of capital improvements in the Sun Rail project. And we were proceeding in that manner, again, until the governor's orders came in, and then DOT said... The premise of the local government's partner's letter to DOT was, "Don't build Phase Two North and hold the money in reserve for other capital projects." DOT said they can't do that because of the reprioritization of the funding of all of DOT. And with that, DOT then said, "We have the money to build Phase Two North. We need to build Phase Two North now." Over the last several months, they came up with an alternative plan that was presented to you previously in a prior workshop. Phase Two North will be constructed from DeBarry to Deland in a manner that will have the meeting the FTA requirements of the number of arrivals and departures from that station. And DOT has done a scaled-down model that meets the minimum requirements for travel but is not the original $70 million project that is about a $48 million project now. Volusia County has ponied up their portion of the funding for that construction. It was half, half the money was the federal money, 25% was from DOT, and 25% is from Volusia County. So Phase Two North is now in the process of being built. Anticipated construction completion at this point is early in 2024. And against that background, DOT and some of the local government partners have been having very preliminary informal discussions, and I'd like to run through those terms with you now. Can you go back one slide, please? These are the possible terms of settlement, and the source of this material is from Tony Allor with Osceola County, and it was in an email to the Local Government Partners Working Group. Our request today is to authorize staff to proceed with these negotiation on these deal points. And these deal points, again, are nothing that you haven't seen before. This is the same materials that we've been working on for a couple of years, the same issues as previously presented. They're now just couched as settlement terms so we can put some of the items, give them some definitive direction as how the issues are going to be resolved. Next slide, please. The first item is the transition from FDOT to the Central Florida Commuter Rail Commission, and I'll just refer to that as the Rail Commission. And the proposal on the table is one year after DOT begins operation of Phase Two North, and that is anticipated in February of 2025. So completion 2024, or one year, the technical term is the burn-in time to make sure the system is operating correctly, and then do the transition to the local government partners, which is the Rail Commission, in February of 2025. Again, a sliding scale based on when the construction is actually completed. And the estimated cost of taking over Sun Rail for Seminole County, based on the latest budget projections that we had received from DOT, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 to $14.5 million annually. Okay? But with this, the other items that we'll be looking at are ways to basically whittle away at that particular amount and have DOT retain some of the fiscal responsibility for Sun Rail. And that's the main thrust of why we want to go into these negotiations. Next slide, please. One of these items is the positive train control. Positive train control, when the original documents were created, did not exist. It came in as a federal mandate in 2008. DOT took it upon itself to address how to address the positive train control. And with that, they chose to do an in-house system of the rail corridor, the 60-mile-one rail corridor, as opposed to joining in with... Other options would have been to join in with CSX into their system, which is more statewide, and just pay a premium to CSX to run the positive train control. That option was not explored. DOT decided to do their own positive train control, and that is about a $7 to $9 million annual cost to the Sun Rail project.
Which increases each year.
Yes. That is correct. So with that, since DOT made those decisions without consulting the local officials, which under our governing documents they should have done, our negotiation point with DOT is that DOT will continue to pay for that positive train control. And again, this comes from the Central Office of DOT, not our District Five work program. So DOT would take the responsibility for the positive train control cost. Next item. Next item is the auto racks on the corridor. Originally, the idea is we have the A-line, which is where Sun Rail runs, and then the S-line, which is further west and is a freight corridor. Originally with CSX, CSX was supposed to remove all of its trains from the A corridor onto the S corridor, and they were given $25 million to help offset that and to also build a freight facility in Winter Haven. And as part of that, there is the auto rack cars, and those are the train cars that carry automobiles on them. DOT was supposed to have removed the... Oh, excuse me. CSX was supposed to have removed those items, or those auto racks, from the A-line in 2018. There was an extension, a tolling agreement, given by DOT unilaterally without consultation to the Rail Commission to allow CSX to continue to operate on the A-line. Now, with that, under the current agreement, DOT does receive about $600,000 annually based on the per train car usage along the A-line. And that is something that we would like to talk with CSX about as the Rail Commission with DOT at our side to renegotiate the usage of the A-line by CSX. And the reason that's important is because, I mean, the thought to say simply, "Remove your auto racks from the A-line and use your Winter Haven facility," I don't believe is going to make economic sense at the end of the day, because the ultimate usage of those cars coming off of the auto racks is to the Orlando International Airport as rental cars. So to have those cars go to Winter Haven and then have to be transported up to OIA does not make a lot of sense. I think it's going to make more economic sense to renegotiate and get a larger rental fee to allow them to use the A-line, and that will help offset any wear and tear and maintenance on the tracks and also increase on offsetting the operation of Sun Rail.
Well, if I may interject, there's really three issues on that one particular item, and I think you've touched on them a little bit. One is they were supposed to be moved from the beginning at a certain date.
Correct.
That didn't happen because DOT actually made another contract with CSX without the Rail Commission being aware of it.
Correct.
Number two, by the auto racks using the rail line, they're now generating additional wear and tear on the track that causes more maintenance.
That is correct.
Number three, we should be negotiating a better financial deal to offset those two costs. And number four, the fourth item, which I'm hoping that you all are talking about, is that by moving the freight from the A-line to the S-line, it cuts down the freight coming through to Central Florida, which was the whole caveat of that $25 million. That way, it would reduce traffic congestion. So when you negotiate, you need to be looking at traffic congestion model plan of those rail crossings coming down and slowing traffic in Central Florida. So those are the four items that are on the table, just on that one item, as I see it.
That is, that is correct. Thank you for that drill down a little bit further.
I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that.
Thank you. And actually, I just, if we can go back two slides. On the transition from FDOT to the Rail Commission and on the date, with that requirement of the turnover and then taking on the financial responsibility, it would be one year from the beginning of operations of Phase Two North. One suggestion that's been made, and I think it's a very good one, and we would like to proffer this to the full group, is rather than having it be one year from the beginning of operations, it would be the beginning of the next fiscal year after the beginning of operations. And in that way, it would be a little bit easier to plan, and the transition will not occur in the middle of the fiscal year.
Paul, on that note, you need to define whose fiscal year, because there's DOT's fiscal year, which is in July, and the county's and the city's fiscal year, which is October 1.
Our opening offering, our opening offer would be our fiscal year.
I just want to be clear.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Can we go to item number four now? The encroachments. The 61-mile corridor was purchased by DOT from CSX. There were various encroachments of neighbors along the rail line that have rail spurs and buildings that encroach into, and roadways that encroach into the rail corridor. Typically, those issues are addressed before acquisition of the property. In this case, it was not. So there are still those encroachments. Those are a potential liability concern, and our first position is that DOT needs to clear out all those encroachments. As a fallback, DOT may have the option of keeping the rail corridor, because again, they're going to keep, in any scenario, they are keeping physical ownership and turning an easement over to the Rail Commission to utilize the rail corridor for Sun Rail. But with that easement to us, the question becomes, are we fully responsible for the rail corridor such that we would be the permitting agency if somebody wanted to utilize it for a new rail crossing or an encroachment for a rail spur or something of that nature? So the fallback position we would take is that DOT would continue to maintain the permitting responsibility and maintain the liability for the operation of the corridor and give us an operational easement. And then they would also hold us harmless, and then they would be the lead agency in the permitting of other uses within the rail corridor. This would be less administrative cost to the Rail Commission and also potentially reduce our insurance exposure. Yes, sir.
And Paul, the other thing that I want to add that we really haven't spoken about, when someone uses someone else's property, there's usually a fee associated with it. So I would want someone to do some research to see if there's any fees associated with the use of someone else's property, that that's why they're encroaching on it.
Deeper dive. Explain that again.
So if you want to use your neighbor's yard to do parking, sometimes they're going to lease it to you. There's a cost. So if they're leasing property from DOT or CSX so that they can park cars there or use it for a structure or retention part, there should be a cost of using someone else's property. So there should be a lease agreement. If there's any money that they're transferring back and forth, the Sun Rail Board should be, or Commission should be receiving that money to offset their operational cost. If there's not a financial piece of it, shame on them for allowing someone to use someone else's property without receiving some type of financial offset.
So how does that play in? Example. Who's using whose property and not paying now?
I have no idea if they are or not. I have not looked at all the encroachments.
There are some, if I may...
Sure.
There are some agreements that CSX has with DOT on certain uses of property, whether it be for storage, whether it be for stuff like that. I think what Commissioner Delory is saying is, if and when that happens, we want that money instead of DOT.
That's my point.
Bottom line, that's what he's saying, which makes sense.
And it may not only be CSX, it may be other people that are physically located along the right-of-way, such as a warehouse that has a rail spur in there. And their building may be a little bit more in the right-of-way on their property.
But we're not... But Sun Rail's not going to be utilizing it.
There's a responsibility for the corridor. It's within the boundaries of the corridor. Under the agreements, the corridor will be transferred by lease to the Rail Commission.
Okay.
And so, if I may, Chairman, I think what we're advocating for is that if there is...
Right.
If there is revenue, not that we would...
I said "if" in that sentence.
So I think that's the big differentiator.
I didn't say they should.
Because oftentimes, those encroachments don't have a money exchange.
I understand that, but I say, in my sentence, I was very careful in saying, "If there's..."
Right. I'm just clarifying.
And we just don't know what the deals with DOT are.
We don't know what the deals are.
And that's, you know, this is just a safety measure. It makes perfect sense.
Yep.
If.
Yes. And again, that is something that we can also give direction to our transition consultant to get some preliminary information back to us on.
If. And when?
It's a little word, but it means a big difference.
Is this going to be how we behave today?
We're all being nice. Let's go.
Next slide, please. The state of good repair, and this is a very large item. The transition consultant is looking, giving a top-to-bottom. They are looking at all of the contracts, and that there are scores of contracts for the operation of Sun Rail that DOT has out there. They're looking at all of those. And one of the items that is in our documents is that when the system is transferred, it is to be in a state of good repair. So the transition consultant is doing the analysis on that. One of the major concerns is on the vehicles. The vehicles have a shelf life and need overhauls after a certain amount of mileage usage. And typically, in a normal system, that's somewhere between seven and 10 years. Sun Rail has been operating about that long now. So the question is, where is DOT on the overhaul of those vehicles? And if they are not overhauling the vehicles, do they have the funds to turn it over? Because again, it's, we're expecting a system that is in a state of good repair. So we want the bright, shiny, with the guarantee AOK used car sign on it as opposed to the, here's your old jalopy, good luck.
You want a certified pre-owned version?
Yes, we do.
There you go.
And Paul, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, even though we say cars, we're talking about the locomotives as well.
The whole train set, yes.
Want to be clear.
Locomotives and the passenger.
What's important for people to realize is the locomotives that were purchased were locomotives that can be rebuilt more times than what the new locomotives, they have only can be rebuilt two or three times, or these can be built a lot more often for perpetuity purposes. And I just want to be clear that we're talking about the locomotives as well.
Thank you for that clarification. So in our discussions, we had been informed that DOT did have a $21 million reserve fund for these vehicle overhauls, and during our discussions, we're going to make sure that some or majority of that funds are either applied or turned over as part of the transition to deal with this issue. Next slide, please. Again, in the original email from Ms. Allori from Osceola County, she also had some benefits stated, and settling with DOT will allow the transition consultant to complete the task. And that's very important, because again, if we don't have a projected transition date, the transition consultant is floundering a little bit as to how to calculate some of the obligations in the existing contracts. So that would help tremendously in that situation. And again, with no settlement, the transition consultant may be delayed, which would be an additional cost to us. Next slide, please. The settlement is all-encompassing. It keeps FDOT money coming into the system, and again, the Phase One partners would get operating assistance from DOT for a minimum of 10.5 years from the beginning of operation of the Phase One. And the next item, please. And very, very important is, DOT is our partner, not only in Sun Rail, but in all of our transportation needs. And keeping a good relationship with DOT is extremely important. With this current District Five administration, we have a very, very good working relationship now. Secretary Perdue has been outstanding in his willingness to work with the Rail Commission and with the working group and the local government partners to try and find solutions. This is... It's inevitable that the transition is going to occur at some point. DOT has a very good and refreshing attitude that they are willing to work with us at this point in time, so I believe that it now is the time to move forward, to negotiate with them, to get the maximum benefit that we can out of the negotiations and to move forward towards the transition. And again, this is only asking for authorization to proceed with these negotiations. We are not specifically committing to anything. And please, let me state that DOT is not specifically committed to anything either. These are just very preliminary discussion points, but this is the direction that we hope to be heading. So...
Thank you, Mr.
Prior to anything final, it would come back to you for more specific overview and direction before anything would be asked to be voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Chipoff. Before I go and open it up for discussion, I want to remind the folks in the audience that, as I said before the meeting, that you are required to wear a mask in the audience. If you are not wearing a mask, we will ask you to leave. So if there's anyone out there that's not wearing a mask, please put it on. Okay. Open for discussion, Commissioner Delory.
Thank you. First one question, and then I'll make final comments. When we talked about the encroachment on the corridor, we... When we talked about the encroachment on the corridor, we also talked about, I want to make sure we're clear, because in the agreement, it said that we'd have a secured corridor, correct?
Yes.
And I'd like to have some definition of what a secured corridor means to, from the working group to us.
Yes, sir.
And it may not be today, but at some point, I'd like to have what a definition of a secured corridor is. Is that okay, Paul?
I will work on that, yes, sir.
Yep. I'll wait for the chairman to come back. I just want to add, I believe this is fair. And the reason why I say it's fair is because the transition team is taking a deep dive into all the contracts to see what additional items are out there that need to be either looked at or adjusted. I believe DOT has been an excellent partner with us. There's been a whole new breath of fresh air with Secretary Perdue. And I definitely want to thank him and his team publicly. His leadership on this and many other things is amazing. And I believe that he has the best intentions and will have the best intentions for not just Seminole County, but for all of D5. And I look forward to continuing to work with him. These five items, since they're new, we're not looking for an agreement today, but I just want to make sure if there are any deal breakers here that we're discussing them. I think that as we move forward, I'll continue to come back to the board, but I wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to understand what they are and to weigh in on them before, as we move forward. So I think this is the right way that we should be looking at this.
Commissioner Zimbauer, you had a question?
Yes, just clarification for the record. The $6.3 million a year that is being proposed to, for FDOT to kick in, is that in any way, shape, or form going to impact our $12 to $14 million a year cost to our taxpayers?
At the end, I would say, yes, it's not going to be, it's not going to cut it in half, because again, that's spread across the operational cost of the entire system. But that would be a overhead cost of Sun Rail that would be retained by FDOT and would not be put back onto the local government partners.
Right. So the letter that I think we all received last month from FDOT that indicated pretty much this is what you will do, or we'll just take your money out of your work program, where does that stand?
Again, I think...
I'll call it a Jesse James letter, for lack of a better terminology.
I think that, to be candid, I think that's part of the posturing, that it's time to negotiate. Again, I think that's one of, that's their extreme position. And that is a formal letter that we received, but on the other hand, we have been having the discussions and the discussions are going well. With the give and take, it's not come to the table and this is the way it's going to be. It is a give and take discussion that we're having right now.
Okay. Commissioner Zimbauer, oh, Commissioner Hurd, yes?
So I just want to go back and make sure that I have good notes on this for the next time it comes up. And I'm on Slide 3, definition of opens. So I heard you use the term open, and I heard you use the term operational. So does that mean riders on the train moving back and forth across the line with the normal efficiency that we would expect?
Give me one second.
So this is around the transition, one year after FDOT opens Phase 2. Slide 3.
The, in that context, the word opens is equivalent to operations. So opens means it is accepting riders for usage of the system. And that means the system is operational. It's open for operation, I guess is another way to put that. So when that happens, then there would be a one-year burn-in period or usage period to make sure that there's, everything is functioning correctly before there would be any contemplation of turnover. And again, we've added additional time on that to tie it into the fiscal year as well.
Right. And so the tie-in to the fiscal year is from the beginning of the following fiscal year past the burn-in.
Correct.
And are we putting measures into the burn-in period around the definition of operational? I.e., it's running a regular schedule, it's...
Yes.
Whatever may have been measured in the last definition. But I'm not seeing that in here, which is why I'm asking.
Okay. And the short answer is yes. Those items are already contemplated in here. I was just using a little shorthand in this presentation.
I got it.
You're not writing the contract.
No.
Thank you.
Understood. Positive train control, so now I'm on Slide 4, asking DOT to own the expense. What's the duration of that ask? Long as it exists?
That would be permanent.
Perpetuity.
Just clarifying, guys.
Oh, no. I appreciate you doing that.
And then, number 3, in our briefing, I never heard the term S-line, so that's brand-new. Would love a definition from you, Paul, and how that plays into this.
The, excuse me, the S-line is a freight line which is west of Orlando. And so it does not run through the Sun Rail corridor, the current corridor that exists and runs through the various cities. It is further to the west side of town. The exact location, I am not sure, but it, again, it's more of a dedicated freight line.
May I, Mr. Chairman, just a little more clarification if you wouldn't mind? The whole premise of the S-line was that during the day, no more working hours, freight would come through central Florida, and you see the train tracks, guardrails would come down, stop traffic, and all the traffic would back up. So to clean all that up, they paid CSX X amount of millions of dollars to move the freight during daytime to the S-line. And that's why all that moved out there. And that was to clear up the traffic that's happening with the freight during daytime hours.
Other times, they can still use that line.
Yeah. And there was a time, and I don't remember the exact time, because I put the whole contract to memory, but there was a time at nighttime and in the morning that they're allowed to use the freight through central Florida.
If, Commissioner Hurd, are you done?
Yes.
If I can be, if I can interject here, I also, I'm going to first commend the Commissioner Delory and the folks that are working on this contract. I believe that this is a very, very good starting point. I think that our Secretary Perdue has, as you indicated, Commissioner, really been receptive to working with the various partners in this Sun Rail. And I believe that with always using what Commissioner Delory has indicated, the seven-year after everything is complete scenario, I think this is a very good negotiated agreement if we can get all of this together. I do believe that it's very important with DOT's funding mechanism as they have it, that our fiscal year is used as the starting point, worst-case scenario, their fiscal year, but certainly, we don't want to start at whatever day they have the ribbon cutting and it starts working, because that would really put a lot of folks in a difficult situation from a funding standpoint. So negotiating, and I do believe in discussions with the Secretary that he's amenable to that. Certainly, he has people that he has to answer to, but I think that would be something that would be of benefit to all of the partners, including DOT. So if, I'm looking for a, I believe that we're looking for a consensus.
One more.
I'm going to, but I believe we're looking for a consensus. And I think, I was just going to finish, I think this is a good starting point of negotiations. Commissioner Walker?
I just wanted to ask another clarifying question. When we talk about operational, does that include having a system in place that is functioning properly to collect the tolls and, or what do we, what do you call them?
Tickets.
The tickets?
Yes.
And counting people appropriately?
Yes. The state of good repair would include the ticketing system. The current ticketing system leaves a lot to be desired. DOT is working on a replacement ticketing system, which from the preliminary reports should be less expensive and more efficient. Part of the purpose of having that ticketing system, as you said, is to have accurate counts because the allocation of future costs between the local government partners are not only based on track miles that we have, but is also based on the amount of boardings that take place at our, the stations within our jurisdiction.
So will there be a time to verify that that's working accurately? Will the Commission have the ability to look at some type of an audit that proves that it's working accurately?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Answer that question, and then Commissioner Zimbauer had another question.
So DOT is actually out and they're bidding it right now, and we want them to use some type of smartphone technology. The staff, our staff, technical committees as well as DOT, they're working together to try to work those issues out that you have, because we all have those same issues. We understand that there may be some bleed-through or some gaps in it, and we've been told that this new ticketing system should be addressing that. What it is yet, I don't know.
Right. I guess what I just want to ask is, can we somehow work into this discussion that the fact that we'd like to see that system, whatever it is, that there's a period of time where there's an audit that's performed, that we can actually prove that it's working properly, rather than just saying, yeah, we got this new system and it's supposed to work, and we assume it works?
That actually falls under the state of good repair, and I'm sure we can make sure that that's actually identified.
Commissioner Zimbauer? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not certain Commissioner Lockhart's done yet.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Lockhart?
Well, no, I just, I want to make sure, like...
I have a follow-up to that.
Okay, go ahead.
So I think the issue is around the measurement. So you can measure whether the train's running up and down the tracks on schedule, but the word audit came in place.
Yeah, I used it specifically.
And so you have to have tickets issued and the time to do an audit, which may not happen in a one-year burn-in. I think that's the distinction.
Yeah. I really, I'm specifically talking about an audit that comes back that specifically evaluates that system, not just whether or not they consider it in good repair. I'm wanting that to be a leg of the stool, if you will.
If I'm understanding correctly, under the state of good repair, that would mean that all of the systems are properly operating. So the new ticketing system would need to be evaluated and have some type of verification that it is working, and then we have verification of the numbers that they have collected.
Okay.
But to be fair to the Commission, Paul, Mr. Chippoff, we need to use the word audit.
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't mean to be persnickety about it. I just think that...
All these things are good to get into.
Oh, no. With Sun Rail, we need to be persnickety.
To the negotiations, all these, all this is really good.
That's what I'm saying, use the word audit.
This is really good. Commissioner Zimbauer, you had something else?
So on that same point, if I read the consultant agreement, does that not fall under the consultant's purview that is being utilized to review everything on the Sun Rail? Should we move forward? Mr. Chippoff?
Yes, the consultant is looking at all of these aspects and will be reporting back with a stating of his findings, and then also with a, and then later after that, and you will be briefed by the consultant on that. And then as a result of that, with your feedback, there will be a transition plan that will be prepared, which will then come back to each of the Commissions individually and then to the Rail Commission.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, you know, I would support moving forward with discussions, but I have literally read every presentation that FDOT gave to this Commission since the inception of light rail was even discussed. I have looked at all the PowerPoint presentations, I've looked at all the contracts, I've looked at all the amendments to the contracts. And I got to tell you, again, I understand why we're having this settlement discussion, but if I look at the numbers, $12 to $14 million a year, if it's going to be offset by the $6.3 million annually that FDOT's going to kick in, that's going to be split between all the parties, then it looks like to me we might have a 20%, 25% reduction, maybe. Those numbers, we have to be seen. And if you run the numbers on ridership, I think in the whole landscape, we really ought to be looking at the entirety of the viability of Sun Rail to start with and the cost thereof based on the ridership. Because you can't get the turnaround head times to actually make it work. And the ridership is not what we were told. The ticketing costs more than, costs more to print than what the fee is. So again, I'll support moving forward with discussion, but I think we really got to take a hard, deep look at the benefits through the region as well as our citizens here when we're asking them to pay $12 to $14 million now on something that's been going on for a very long time. So that's all I'll say on that matter, that I'll support moving forward.
From the standpoint of the station is completed, I guess what we're looking at is, you know, if we do go with the fiscal year, it would be fiscal year '25, '26.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Just keep that in mind, everybody, '25, '26. Okay. So, Tim, that means that when you're putting these projections out, you can put that into the projections potentially? Okay. Do we have a consensus that we move forward with this settlement agreement based upon the discussion that we've had today? Is everybody okay with that? All right. Mr. Chippoff, do you feel comfortable that you have direction?
I do. I'd just like to ask my cohort in this. John, are you satisfied? We have the thumbs up from Mr. Dredge.
Commissioner Delory, are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied. I just want to make sure that I'm clear with this board, and I make sure that I'm following what this board wants.
Good.
So I believe we have direction, and we have not agreed to anything, but we are moving positively in a direction.
It's my understanding that the other partners are also moving in the same direction, including Volusia.
And I would also tell you that, Commissioner Zimbauer, we've had those same conversations on the Sun Rail Board, so you're not alone.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we finished with that. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on that? Kayla? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. The next item is impact fee update studies on water, wastewater, fire, and library impact fees, and that is going to be with Ms. Hammack. And I think everybody is now comfortable that the air conditioner is working again.
Yeah.
So actually, working a little bit better. It goes up and down.
Commissioner Hurd's dog.
Working too good, maybe, a little bit. Okay. With that, Rebecca.
Hi, good morning. For the record, Rebecca Hammack, Development Services Director. I'm going to start the presentation, and then I'm going to hand it over to the county's consultants. We have two consultants here this morning with us. We have GovRight Inc., who took the lead on preparing the studies for the water and wastewater capacity fees. And then we also have Negan Camp from Tendell Oliver, and she took the lead on the library and the fire impact fees. So I'm going to do a little bit of an introduction, then hand it over to them to do their presentations and answer any questions that you have. And then I'll come back and finish up with some discussion items. And then we also have the directors here from the various departments to answer any questions that you have. So as you all are well aware now, we did enter into a contract last year with GovRight Inc. and Tendell Oliver to prepare impact fee studies for library, fire, and water and wastewater. We have, over the last year, had many meetings with the consultants, and the various departments have provided data to the consultants, so the studies are completed now. So we are at the stage where we are reviewing those studies with the Citizens Advisory Committee that was approved by this board at the meeting on March 23rd. And then we're also at the stage of reviewing those studies and proposed impact fee updates with the Board of County Commissioners. with the Board of County Commissioners. So as you're aware, we did have to form a Citizens Advisory Committee. The composition of that committee was approved on March 23rd. Each of the groups did appoint members to that and we did have our first meeting this past Friday on April 9th. And the feedback was generally positive from the group. They had a couple of questions or concerns. One specifically was they thought the fire impact fee rate was too high for restaurants or fast food restaurants with drive-through. And, and they did state that ultimately increased impact fees do get passed on to the end user and do impact affordability. And we can come back to those specific things later on after, after the presentations. And with that, I will, I will hand it over to Negan Camp to start their presentations.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you speak up, please?
Negan Camp with Tindell Oliver, is that better?
But still, you're going to have to speak and project. Thank you very much.
We have a presentation going through the background and then addressing libraries and fire rescue. In terms of the background, these two studies were last updated in early 90s and the county has been experiencing continuing growth since then. So that's requiring funding for additional facilities. Impact fees by definition are a one-time capital charge to new development. They cover the cost of new capital facilities and implement the capital improvement programs. Really, the purpose, purpose of impact fees is to maintain the current level of service. They calculate cost of growth and they are most needed when there's high growth and limited alternative funding. The study is using what we call a consumption-based methodology. It's charging new growth based on the value of the capacity it's consuming and it's a very common methodology used throughout Florida. It does ensure that the fees are not at a level to correct existing deficiencies and that's one of the legal requirements. So the basic impact fee formula starts with looking at the cost to add capacity, so that's the value of the capital facilities to date. And from that, we subtract any future revenues that will be contributed by new development toward the same infrastructure, just to make sure that they are not being overcharged. And that net cost gets multiplied by demand and for these two fees is measured in terms of population. There are several components that I'll go through. In terms of the service area, libraries are provided on a countywide basis and the fire rescue is in unincorporated counties as well as the three cities. So if we start with libraries, the inventory includes five libraries are owned by the county, about 100,000 square feet of building space, about 15 acres of land, and we also include the materials and equipment. The building values are estimated based on reviewing any recent construction or upcoming bids, insurance values of the buildings, and then that's supplemented by any data from other jurisdictions. That's, and in the case of libraries, that's estimated at $300 per square foot. And then the land value is estimated at 125,000 per acre and that's again based on if there are any recent purchases or appraisals, the value of the current land where the buildings are located, and then vacant land sales and values throughout the county. In terms of the level of service, buildings are measured as square foot per population, that's about .2, and then the materials and computers are measured in terms of items per population. When we add all the assets, the total asset value is about 74 million and that's divided by the population gives us about $150 per resident. And that shows the investment the community has made up to this point into library infrastructure. That's sort of our starting point. We then look at any non-impact fee funding that was contributed toward capacity projects and over the past five years, there was about $85,000 per year. So that results in a 20 cents of credit on an annual basis. And over a 25-year period, that's about $3. So it's only about 2%, 3% is being funded with other revenue sources. So the net cost is about $150. We then take that $150 and multiply by persons per unit for different residential categories. And libraries are only charged to residential land uses. So you can see the fees ranging anywhere from 200, almost 270 for multi-family to 440 for a large single family. And then the slide also shows the current adopted fees. So this slide provides a comparison to other jurisdictions. We started with surrounding counties, but then several of them did not have the fee, like Orange, Osceola and so on. So we added some more counties. There are a couple of things on this slide. We included the study date to indicate the date of the data. So for example, Brevard County hasn't been updated since 2000. And then also the assessed portion, that's the policy decision of their boards to adopt a discount. So to the, just to give, so this slide shows the fees ranging anywhere from 64 to 336 for a mid-sized, single-family home. When we look at it, for example, Brevard County had a study done later, which was higher, but they didn't adopt. Charlotte County has a different situation with sales tax going to the library services, infrastructure sales tax. So we tried to show if we were to adjust for these based on all those footnotes that are, right now, I can't even read it, but that, then the range would be, you know, $300 to 484. So that's more as far as the, more comparable as far as the actual data of library investment. The other one is, you know, otherwise this, we are influenced by the date of the adoption as well as the adoption percentages.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes.
Could I ask for clarification of something that you said earlier about Orange County not having the fee? Is that because they generate revenue for libraries in a different way?
Yes, they have a library dedicated to mileage.
So they have an additional tax on all properties?
They have an additional tax.
Okay. I wanted to make sure we got that on the record, not that they just didn't charge a fee.
Right, sorry. They have, they're funding it separately.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Zimbauer?
This, this is a question for staff and just want to make note for the public record. Slide 19 that is currently on the screen is not the same slide 19 that is on the package online.
Wow. Who knew?
I, I, I use mine electronically and it doesn't match the paper, so.
Okay, wait a minute, let's get a clarification.
Yes.
Ms. Hammack?
Sure, for the record, Rebecca Hammack, we did make some changes to the slides on, I guess, yesterday, I think was, we got updated slides based on a briefing from Friday. And so we did hand out hard copies, so the hard copies should match. And I emailed your office last night with the most recent versions.
Yes, understood. I got mine at 9:51, but if the public doesn't get an email and the public's relying on what's online, and now we're giving a presentation, I just-
True, yes.
Make sure that the public understands this could be somewhat confusing. And I'm following online because I don't want to cut any more trees down for paper, but.
Yeah, so we did add some footnotes to that slide just for clarification, but yes, but point noted, that we need to update the online versions, too.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Just stay right there, Rebecca, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Delory?
Are there any other changes that we need to be aware of that's not updated?
Well, whatever changes there were are provided in the, in the hard copies that were distributed on the dais this morning. So there's some, there were some clarification items that were added to the slide based on a briefing on Friday.
So Rebecca, we can be assured that any changes that were made for us today, that we will make them online as soon as possible.
Yes, we can upload the new versions of the PowerPoints, yes.
Thank you very much.
And for clarification, the, the package was also given to the clerk, so it will be reflected in the background documentation for this meeting.
I'm sorry, Paul, I didn't understand.
And the package was also given to the clerk, so it will be reflected in the minutes and the background documentation of this meeting.
Is, is it possible that we put together a protocol for these kind of changes so that this column is checked off to make sure we get it online?
Question for the county manager. I mean, we can. I think what happened with this was they got, they were asked for some additional information on Friday, were not able to pull it together until late last night. So in an attempt to make sure that everybody had the information that was requested at a commission briefing on Friday, we'll do our best to get it, to get everything updated. I would ask that you understand that sometimes when they're working on documents into the evening, the day before the meeting, it might be a little bit of a challenge, but we'll do our best to get it.
No, no, I totally, I totally understand that, but just so the public has it, you know, I don't know, maybe briefings need to be moved back so we make sure everything gets online. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just trying to be consistent-
Understood.
-because we're talking about something here in a presentation and if folks are looking at documents online, they're not the same documents.
It's, it's a completely legitimate issue.
Which I understand.
And we'll do our best to do that. I would just ask that you understand that, I mean, I know Rebecca got the information out too soon as they had it and that was late in the evening last night, so, but we will do our best to get it, everything updated as quickly as we can.
And just, and just to clarify, we did, and we did get the information yesterday throughout the day, so I will, I will say that it was oversight. I did not send it to Shani to update the website, so.
I understand.
I take responsibility for that.
No worries, I'm just, just trying to move forward with-
Understood.
No.
We don't keep hitting this one because it happens more than now.
Yeah, and in the past, we sometimes didn't include the PowerPoints within the printed agenda and would only have the PowerPoints at the meeting-
Right.
-for this reason, because sometimes there's changes that come up at the last minute. So there is, we could possibly look at doing that to where there's nothing printed online. So if there are changes, then, but.
Yeah, whatever, it'll all work out.
Okay.
Just in advance.
All right, I think we talked about this before and I think everybody understands what we're going to try to do.
Chairman? Constantine.
Yes, ma'am.
So I agree, we've talked about it enough, but this is about building a process that we all follow and not putting the PowerPoints online does not make sense to me, so, and Novus falls into that conversation because Novus is not updated either. So in my mind, Novus, which is, that's the board book system that we use electronically. Commissioner Zimbauer uses the online version because it doesn't always line up with Novus, but that's where we can take notes. It all has to line up. And so I will own, I was the Friday briefing that asked for footnotes that I think are extremely relevant to the conversation. So I am extremely thankful that you guys worked over the weekend and got them in there and then, I don't want this little glitch to overpower that because they're important footnotes, including the Orange County situation. But, and if you would like me to move up my briefings, I would be happy to move up my briefings. We're doing them at your will, so march on.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Delory?
Thank you. I have a question. We're using square footage on single families. Would it be more applicable to use bedroom counts because we've done that in other impact fees?
Yes, we actually, we have a slide on that.
Because it's really about how many people are in the homes that are living there.
After like, thank you, all the way at the bottom, I'm sorry.
You're now confusing me. Where are we at?
At the very end of the presentation. Sorry about that. We have, we have one slide in case of that question.
Prepared for you.
There, one more. Go down one, there we go, okay. The issue with what we found with bedrooms is that what a bedroom is tends to vary even in the same house, so something that starts as a den may become easily a bedroom when they put a closet in. So that definition of bedroom becomes challenging to track. But what we did is we looked at number of bedrooms in different sized homes to show that square footage is also a good indicator that there are more bedrooms in a given house, so therefore there's a relation. And that is a lot more concrete, as far, I mean, the square footage itself is easier to track and understand. So that's the reason square footage is used.
Okay, next question.
Well, just to follow up on that, we had that issue with the educational impact fee discussion. Early on, we found that builders were marketing units as one bedroom plus a den. And then later on, we knew that there were children living in the den who were clearly getting on school buses and coming to school. So it was, it was too easy to manipulate by that measure for that, anyway.
And for clarification, I'm looking at the school impact fee as we adopted it and it is square footage.
Right, I remember that. I mean, to that point, just for the record, Commissioner Zimbauer's bedroom was a closed-off garage. So square footage would be appropriate.
I'm sure we're worried about you going to school.
That's right, absolutely.
And there might be a backstory there that I'd like to know.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll talk about that off-record.
I think every, you know, I mean, like, I can, I can verify I did the same thing with my, you know, house. Okay, we are on libraries, let's do that before we move on to fire. Is there any other questions about libraries before we move on to fire? Seeing none, let's go to fire.
Fire rescue, the inventory includes 20 stations and other buildings, altogether about 170, 70,000 square feet of building space and 44 acres of land. We also include the vehicles and equipment. The station value is estimated at $465 per square foot and the land value is about 200,000 per acre. In terms of level of service for capital facilities, we look at population per station and currently the county is handling about 15,000 people per station. And total asset value is about 121 million and that divided by population gives us about $420 per person. And again, that's the investment the county has made up to this point into fire rescue infrastructure. There are other revenue sources being used as well, so they amount to about 1.6 million annually and that gives us almost $6 credit for non-residential land uses, about $8 credit on an annual basis for residential land uses. And the difference between the two is to recognize that new homes pay higher AdVolum taxes because they don't have the SAVR caps yet, so that's why it's different. So then we subtract the credit from the cost and the net cost is about $284 per resident for residential land uses and about 325 per person for non-residential land uses. And those multiplied by persons per unit gives us the calculated fee. Fire rescue fees are charged both to residential and non-residential land uses and we basically look at the density of people at each land use and that's kind of determines the final fee. Non-residential land uses are on a per thousand square foot basis and the fast food question is really indicative of the density of people in a small building. So when you think of all the drive-through and all the people coming through and people in and out of all day, on a per thousand square foot basis, there are a lot of people compared to say industrial building, which is very large and fewer people are coming and going. So that's why the fee is high, but then they only are 2, 3,000 square foot buildings. On the residential side, the single family is about almost 500 per unit and multifamily is about 330. So we have a comparison, we actually have two sets of comparison. This is to the surrounding counties and then we also have one with the cities. And again, here also, we show the study date, adoption percentage, and then we added notes about some of them that we know why they are right now lower or what the reason behind it. So for example, Brevard County was updated in 2000, hasn't been since then. There was a study done in 2010 that showed a higher rate, but wasn't adopted. Lake County is right now adopting, so there are draft findings suggesting around 500. And Orange County was able to allocate significant amount of sales tax revenue to bring up, you know, build, I think it's like five, six stations to catch up. So that, that resulted in a large credit and lowered the fee. So this slide provides a comparison. If those adjustments were made more or less, like, we couldn't really adjust Orange County as much, but the other ones that you can kind of see, the fee range would be anywhere from 325 to almost 600. I think with that, oh, and then this, this slide also provides a comparison to cities in Seminole County and nearby, and you can see, single families ranging anywhere from 400 to 700 per unit. So I think with that.
1992.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, okay. Fire, anybody have any questions on that? Commissioner Zimbauer.
Don't have any questions, just, again, the online doesn't match this presentation, just so the public understands.
This had the same additional slide for the notes.
From the same additional briefing, and I appreciate you putting it in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Delory.
The only thing that I'd like to do, if it's okay, I'd like to ask our staff to talk to, or work with the Florida Association of Realtors, because my concern is the affordable housing aspect of it, and I want to make sure that we're looking at affordable housing correctly, so we're not pricing them out of the market as well. And I think by working with the Florida Association of Realtors, they may have some ideas, and I'd like to understand what they potentially could be.
Also, there is a recent state legislation that allows local governments to discount fees for affordable housing.
I realize that, but before we go there, I'd like to understand what the Florida Association of Realtors are looking at. They've been very involved in affordable housing as well, and I'd like to make sure that we're looking at that. And maybe it's using the trust fund that we have to pay for it. Don't know.
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Just, just to that point, as you're representative on the AHAQ, yes, for affordable and obtainable housing, we are able to waive fees for that purpose, if it is for affordable housing, as long as we follow the statute.
Commissioner. Commissioner Delory.
There were a couple of appointees to the advisory committee that were still left to be appointed. Do we have the appointee yet for the, for the Realtors Association? So we have a member of the Realtors Association sitting on the Citizens Advisory Committee right now? Is that correct?
For the record, Rebecca Hammack, Development Services Director. Yes, we do. The two outstanding members that hadn't been appointed were PBAS and the chamber, the chamber now has appointed a member, Lauren Miller, but we still do not have an appointee for PBAS.
Okay.
PBAS actually had recommended, or one of their members recommended the same appointee as DAB, so, since they're, I think DAB is actually a subset of PBAS, so we're, I'm still waiting on an official appointee.
And I think we need to look at that, because that is, that is pretty much true. So the next time we look at this, we may not want to have both of them.
A double whammy. And I believe, the Lauren Miller is Lauren Miller I'm thinking of, she is a Realtor, is she not?
She's a commercial real estate.
Oh, commercial.
I believe, she's from, I think it's J. Wayne Miller Company, something, something along those lines.
All right.
But to be fair, I'd like to actually hear our staff talk to the board members of the Florida Association of Realtors, not just Realtors.
Well, you should talk to HBA, too, the home board.
Absolutely.
For the record, I had a meeting with Cliff Long of the Florida, of the Orlando Board of Realtors last night concerning this, and he said to me, as did his president, Mr. Fagan, that they understand that, you know, how government needs to get money, and as long as we take into consideration affordable housing, as you indicated, Commissioner Delory, that they understand that we haven't done this for a long time.
I realize that.
Yeah, and I'm just letting you know what he said to me, and that, you know, if we do this, and just keep them informed, and understand that, you know, that they're concerned, their big concern right now is affordable housing, that they're going to work with us and feel comfortable with our process.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's why I think it'd be advantageous for us to have our staff meet with their staff, as well as the Builders Association. I think it would bring a lot of goodwill to the table.
And there's also an appointee on the Citizens Advisory Committee from, from GOBA.
Okay.
And we do have affordable housing and accessory dwelling units as a topic of discussion later in the, in the presentation.
And remember, all this is an update. We're not making decisions today. We're just, we're making recommendations and suggestions. Okay, we are now at wastewater, I believe.
Can everyone?
Name an address for the record.
Sure.
For, for the record, my name is Brian Mance, President of Goverates, and I am pleased to present the results of the water and wastewater capacity fee review. And to begin with, I thought it might be good, since this, this has been brought up, for people that are following online, the first nine slides of this presentation are the same as what is online. And then we have a, we have a new slide 10, so after, after slide nine, you would just add one to the, to, to, to match what's online.
Well, thank you for being proactive, because as you know this board, we would have heard that.
And I own it.
Okay. So.
Excuse me, Kayla, are you comfortable now? It's, it's getting a little chilly in here now. You want to turn just a tad up, please? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Other duties as assigned.
Well, that's why we're not going to do anything until she does.
Be careful, the clerk's going to allocate a part, portion of her FET.
Well, I saw her shivering over there, so I thought that she would want to do. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, please go ahead.
So the, the purpose of the water and wastewater capacity fee study is, of course, to provide a basis for the capacity fee levels. The capacity fees were last reviewed many years ago, we're thinking 2004, and so, as a result, a large portion of the utility infrastructure upon which the current fees are based is no longer in service. And so as such, all investments into the water and wastewater systems since the last update are not reflected in the existing fees. And we also reviewed the way that the fees are applied to different customer types. With respect to background on, on capacity fees, of course, they, a key takeaway is that they support a policy of growth paying for growth. And, you know, again, a key takeaway is that they help reduce the need for monthly user rate increases, to the extent that we don't get the extra, as, as, as the, you know, the utility capital program is the utility capital program, and has to be completed and funded. So to the extent that you don't have the, the, the cash flow associated with right-sized capacity fees, the user rates would have to be increased a few more percentages to, in order to, to have that same cash flow, in order to fund the capital program. Certainly, the, the application of capacity fees, it's very common in the industry, there are a lot of statutory and case law requirements that need to be considered when developing. And water and sewer capacity fees are usually charged on a per equivalent residential connection basis, in their, which is, and, or an ERC, and then ERC is the typical demand of a single family residential customer. As I talked about, there's, there's, there's a lot of statutory and case law requirements that need to be, to be followed. With respect to how the capacity fees were calculated, we're, we've applied one of the more defensible approaches, where we actually considered the original cost, the county actually incurred for the installed capacity that can install, to conserve growth, and also the capital improvement program through 2030, which includes treatment facility upgrades, alternative water supply projects, upgrades to existing assets available to serve growth. As we talked about, the, the capacity fees haven't been touched or, or updated probably since 2004, and since that time, there have been a lot of water conservation initiatives, and newer technologies, more, more efficient water fixtures, and as a result, there's been, we are recommending a lower level of service per ERC, based on historical data and planning assumptions. For water, we're recommending that the, that the, that the level of service standard be reduced from 350 gallons per day to 250 gallons per day, and wastewater from 300 gallons per day to 215 gallons per day. And this is a, this is a trend that's, that's being recognized throughout Florida, just a lowering of level of service standards, just based on, just changes in habits and water conservation. So with respect to how the, the fees are applied to non-residential customers, right now, the current methodology is to, is based on customer attributes, which would be like the number of seats in a restaurant, or is assigned a certain amount of flow, or the number of beds in a hospital, each bed is, is assigned a certain amount of flow. The flow is assigned to each bed, or to, disadvantage of this approach is that the flow assigned to each bed or per seat may be outdated or unrealistic, there are possible difficulties with calculating ERCs for mixed-use properties, and there's a greater probability of challenges. So what we're recommending is a combination of, of, an approach based on the meter size and also the estimated usage of the development. The, the meter-sized approach is widely referenced in rate-making manuals from the American Waterworks Association, and also the Water Environmental Federation. It's, it reflects the service capacity based on meter size, among, probably among all the approaches, it's the easiest to calculate and administer, and it's rarely challenged. And, so, again, we think, and what we're finding is that more, more governments are, local governments are transitioning from a, from either, you know, the plumbing approach or a, or a, or a customer attributes approach to a meter-based approach, because they're, because of the amount of staff time that's been having to, that's having to deal with challenges to the, to the methodology. As far as the proposed capacity fees are concerned, the, the, the proposed water capacity fee for a single-family residential home is $2,000, $2,574 for, for water, $3,175 for wastewater, combined $5,749.
Mr. Chairman. I have a question, if I may.
Okay.
The reason why I asked a question earlier about square footage versus bedrooms was because of this slide here.
Mm-hmm.
Now we're going back to bedrooms. Previous presentation has said that bedrooms are very difficult, and they wanted to do square footage, and now we're going, and that's why we went with square footage, with the fire and the libraries. And now we're going back to bedrooms.
Well, the, the methodology here is not really based on, on square footage, but the, but the assumed usage for, for the specific unit. For example, multifamily, multifamily with one to two bedrooms, it seemed to have 80% of the water demand of a single-family residential home, and this is actually.
So the pretense that they told me earlier doesn't apply here, because even though you have a two-bedroom with a den, no one will ever change that den to a bedroom here.
Right. I mean, it's, it's demand-based, it's, you know, it's based on the, the assumed water demand of a, of a multifamily.
I just want a clarification.
Okay.
Gotcha. I wouldn't would ever do that.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
So, your point is very well taken. There's an inconsistency in the thought process between the two methodologies.
Correct.
And so could someone explain to us from staff why we have two different methodologies? I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I just want an explanation, because I think Commissioner Delory makes a very good point.
Two different companies, didn't you?
Yeah, that shouldn't, I mean, we should be able to sift through that.
Terry.
For the record, Terry McHugh, Director, Environmental Services Department. So I'll speak to the water sewer side. What we're really after is the, based on the information we had with development, what's the best way to get at population? Because ultimately, I mean, indoor water usage per person, without irrigation, just indoor usage, is on the order of 60 gallons per person per day. And from my perspective and viewpoint, the number of bedrooms is a better estimate of what population is than square footage.
And no one would ever change a den into a bedroom?
Well, let's start with, with commercial. For commercial, they'd have to apply for a change of use, and the change of use might dictate additional charges based on what that use is. But do we do change of use for single, for residential units? No, we don't.
I'm discussing the multifamily.
Okay.
Commissioner Zimbauer, are you finished?
I'm done. I proved my point.
Commissioner Zimbauer.
Well, it's, you know, the, the additional spin on that, I mean, at least in my district, and I'm sure in others' districts as well, we have plenty of 5,000, 6,000 square foot homes that have a husband and wife in it, that have six or seven bedrooms, four and five bathrooms. They're not impacting with, although they have X amount of bathrooms, but also have X amount of square footage. But likewise, when you do a septic permit, it's based on what?
Bedrooms.
Bedroom.
Yeah, it should be bedrooms. I mean, I don't do septic permits, but I would assume.
Can building, building answer that, Rebecca?
From personal experience, I can tell you it's bedrooms.
Right. Can you speak to the microphone?
It's bedrooms.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and I'll also say, too, for determining, just because two people live there today, what about 20 years from now, or 10 years from now?
Well, yeah.
So you have, you have to use some nexus to be able to estimate.
No, no, I, I totally understand that. No different than when we bulldozed a residential area that now becomes a commercial area.
Terry.
Or vice versa.
And, and I.
I'm just trying to get to that nexus.
This, this, this is the, this is the, the quandary that's going on, okay? You've got library, and you have fire, that is based upon square footage. You have wastewater and, and sewer, sewer, water and sewer, based upon a bedroom, okay? And we don't have to go through this now, but somebody's going to have to explain to us why one should be that, and why the others should be this, not just because this is the way we always did it, okay? And, and I see that we have one of our consultants that did the other two standing up, so we'll let her say something, please.
I, I just, just want to clarify, I think either one, if it's measured accurately, is a, provides the necessary nexus. I mean, that's why we tried to show with the chart that compares square footage to bedroom. It's our experience that it's harder to track bedrooms when you are actually administering the fee, but, but that was the only reason. But it's not necessarily that the fee calculation is wrong, as long as you can recognize, or you're able to track how many bedrooms in it.
You have a commission, you have a commission here, I'm just telling the two consultants, that is very meticulous, and they want consistency, and I think that's what, I just, you know, we're have to, you know, if this, I, I just wanted people to understand that. That's where we're getting the questioning. I saw Commissioner Zimbauer, and Commissioner Herr.
Just a question for this consultant. Is there a national standard? In your business, is there not a national standard to be pointed to, that this is the standard to be relied upon, or is it, they're not?
There is, there is not. It's, we see more per square foot measurements, but there are also communities that use bedroom, and there is no legal requirement or guidance that says you have to use one or the other, it just has to be proportional, the fees have to be proportional.
So there's no standard whatsoever?
Okay.
Not for libraries and fire.
There are multiple accepted approaches, and I can, this is the, the approach that the county has been using for, for.
We understand.
Okay.
Commissioner.
So if you're asking for direction, my direction is consistency is good, but please lean the consistency toward easy to administer. What we don't want to do is set up a debate factory within our operations, so if we can debate this, as to whether or not you can call it a one-bedroom with a den, no one builds a den without a closet these days, we all know that, then let's not do it, and let's make it consistent with all of the other fees. That's at least my, my thought process, just to be completely transparent.
Okay. Okay, and...
I'll throw my hat in that ring, just for the purpose of discussion and for moving forward, if you're looking for direction, just as we're talking about it. I think going back in and having to verify whether or not the den has been converted is tedious, and I concur.
Well, sewer and water capacity fees are done at the time that the house is built, and therefore, they're not going to go back and redo that. Is that correct, Terry? So what... So we got to figure out right when it's, you know, right when the CO...
Because the meter will pick up once it's built and being utilized.
So we don't want to be in that debate with the builders. Let's just call that like it is. We don't want to set up a program that drives to calling something what it isn't. Let's just not do that.
And I think in this capacity, that's what this is doing.
Yep.
Okay? So let's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner Lockhart, then Commissioner Delary.
Well, I just wanted to hearken back to my briefing on this, when we talked about going back and recalibrating and doing checking to see, is that coming up in the presentation, where we're getting to the place where we talk about the fact that we will go back and review and reassess usage, and that there is ability for there to be some type of an appeal even at some point, is that not?
Again, for the record, Terry McHugh, Director, Environmental Services Department. Yes, when directors have comments following the consultant's presentations, I'll address them.
That's where we'll talk about that. Okay, because I think that may come back into play in this discussion. Okay, thanks.
So let's let the consultant finish, and then we'll go and step...
Commissioner Delary? I will wait until after consultant's finished.
Sir, take your opportunity now.
No. And, you know, this has been the methodology for the residential customers. That's been... This is consistent with the county's existing methodology, and we didn't really have an issue with the... The only thing that we addressed as far as methodology was the non-residential. We were recommending to go from a customer-attributes approach to a meter-based approach. So the capacity fee calculations, they meet a lot of different reasonableness tests. They're within the typical range of value among Florida utilities. The proposed water capacity fee, if we express it on a cost per gallon for water and treatment and transmission capacity, comes out to about $10.30 per gallon, which is lower than the what was... Than the $10 per 95 cents of new incremental water treatment capacity that was recognized in the county's 2013 master plan. And then the proposed wastewater capacity fee is slightly lower than the wastewater capacity fee of 24 surveyed Florida utilities. Now, here's where we transition into the... Into a slide that's not on the online version. But here you can see that the combined calculated water and wastewater capacity fee is at $5,749. What we're showing here is what if the existing fees, which haven't been adjusted since 2004, were just indexed by the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index? And you can see that the indexed fee is within the range of the calculated fee. And this would not take into... In our construction cost index, doesn't take into the regulatory requirements that are imposed upon water and wastewater utilities. Another... As another perspective, we looked at, well, what if we indexed the fees based on changes in the water and sewage maintenance index, which is a component of the National CPI, and is published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics? And if we were to index the existing... If the existing fees were indexed by changes in the water and sewage maintenance index, we'd be at impact fees of $7,538 combined. So the calculated, on many different levels, the calculated capacity fees meet the reasonableness test. So with respect to how the capacity fees compare among the neighboring, you know, neighboring central Florida utilities, as you can see, we're right... The calculated fees are right close to what Orange County charges, and also Toho, which is in Kissimmee, which is another large utility that... And so Toho is higher, Orange County is slightly lower, but it's in the same range. I know that the city of Deltona just increased their capacity fees at a higher rate than... At a higher level than what's proposed for the county. So we consider that the capacity fees are competitive. But how a utility compares on a chart is not a report card on how well a utility is performing, because there are a lot of reasons why capacity fees differ among utilities, like source of supply. If a utility that has a brackish water source has a higher cost of treatment than a utility with a freshwater source, or whether you have customers that are close together or far apart, or how much grant funding the utility has had. And in Seminole County's case, it's been negligible grant funding for the utility. The last time that the fees were updated is a consideration. Administrative policies such as, okay, well, I know that, for example, you know, not to charge the amount that could be justified. Level of service standards, just a whole wide range of reasons why capacity fees differ among utilities.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question?
Okay.
So with that chart, can you go back to that chart? Which cities or counties have advanced water treatment, i.e., are using ozone or using chlorine? Because that will make a big difference on the water quality. And then the next question I have, I'll answer it. I'll ask another question after that.
Okay. So again, for the record, Terry McHugh, Director, Environmental Services Department. For the cities on this list, Sanford is the only one that I know of that has some level of ozone. But I guess city of Orlando, too, no use. Also, Toho has it, Orange County has it, so some of the larger utilities do.
So the rest of them are using chlorine, correct?
No, some of them use free chlorine. It's the level of treatment that's necessary is a function of the quality of the raw source water. So you designed... You just don't put it for giggles, you put it because you're trying to solve a problem.
I realize that. And then with that, where I'm going is, based on the water systems that are out there, how much of them are flushing their systems on a regular basis, i.e., dumping water back into the ground on a regular basis, can be pretty staggering.
All systems do that to some extent. Systems with chloramines flush a lot more than those that aren't on chloramines. So that would be Oviedo in this case.
Correct. As well as Winter Springs, I believe. Do we know how many gallons they're flushing annually?
That Oviedo is, no, but I can get that number for us.
When you say "us"...
I mean, for Seminole County Environmental Services, I can give you how much water that we flush.
Yeah, because I could tell you that I've driven by many of fire hydrants through certain cities, and they flush on a regular basis. And there's many times that we get phone calls where people think that the water main is broken, and it's not, they're just flushing it. So it'd be nice to see the correlation of how much water is being dumped on an annual basis because of that, which the residents are paying for.
Sure, yes. You had a second question also?
No. That was the second question, about the water usage that the residents are paying for, that they shouldn't be if they would just go to a more advanced system.
Start moving on to your recommendations page, then.
All right. So our... The recommendation is to adopt the proposed water and wastewater capacity fee schedule. We consider that it meets all the requirements of the case law and statutory law. It's right-sized based on the most recent and localized data, because as we talked about, there's many years since the fees were last adjusted. They're competitive with the capacity fees of neighboring utilities. As we talked about, they help to reduce the need for future user rate adjustments. As one of the members of the Citizens Advisory Committee that we talked with on Friday, Stugley pointed out, when you're talking about user rate increases, you're not only talking about the residential, you know, your own water and sewer bill, but, you know, non-residential customers then have to pass through user rate increases into the cost of commodities. So it, like I said, it helps to reduce the need for future user rate adjustments. They also help to meet the debt service requirement on the utility's outstanding bonds. Right now, the utility's bonds have a requirement, a rate covenant, that net revenues, special assessments, and capacity fees have to be at least 125% of the annual bond debt service. So to the extent that if the county were to have any kind of coverage issues and the capacity fees were not right-sized, then the net revenues, the user rates would need to be increased in order to meet the rate covenant. Another recommendation we have is, and I think we... It was maybe touched on earlier, is to adopt an alternative capacity fee calculation policy. Sanford has one already codified. Other utilities in Florida have it, too. But what it does, it basically does, it provides a formal process for developers to submit an alternative capacity fee if they believe that their impact on the system is less than the calculated amounts under the existing methodology. So if their alternative fee were accepted, the county would have the right to review actual consumption of the development over the next few years and possibly collect additional capacity fees if the actual consumption was more than what was implied by the alternative capacity fee calculation. So the idea would be that the developer would sign an agreement, saying that, hey, you know, we're... You know, the county has accepted your alternative capacity fee, but we do have the right to review and, you know, make sure that, you know, you've represented what your actual demand or impact on the system is. And then finally, our final recommendation would be to update the capacity fees whenever the capital plans and funding change significantly.
Okay. We have both staff people here, Mr. McHugh, Ms. Hammack. We have the consultants. Before we move on, is there any questions on any of the three impact fee studies?
The only statement, Mr. Chairman, the only statement that I would have would be, when we had the presentation from the libraries and the fire impact fees, they stressed the fact that on multifamily, they did not want to go by bedroom, they wanted to go by square footage, which made sense. And now we go to water and wastewater, we're going back to bedrooms. And I think that the answer that I heard for the fire and libraries kind of made sense. I just want to make sure we're moving in the right direction. I like to at least have staff look at that, to see if it does make sense. I'm not trying to create more work for anyone, but I just want to be consistent in making sure we're capturing the real cost. And then the follow-up would be to make sure that we're asking our staff to talk to the realtors and the builders, to make sure that when we talk about impact fees, that we're addressing affordable housing appropriately. Those would be my comments.
And Commissioner Hurd?
Yes, so with regard to the capacity fee, slide 10, the real slide 10 online, I think I asked for it to be updated to show dates, which there was not time to do that. I still think that's valuable information for this board to have at the point that we make decisions. And then I think Commissioner Delary asked for ozone versus chlorine versus chloramines, which I may be saying that one wrong, but there's... This slide is exceptionally helpful if it has the additional information for us to consider.
Anything else, Commissioner Lockhart?
I'll agree with both Commissioner Delary and Commissioner Hurd in their comments, and I will... I want to explore a little bit the alternative capacity fee calculation, if we could. The alternative capacity fees were a goldmine for some folks in this community when it came to educational impact fees, because that was a process that was certainly allowable for people if they felt that they genuinely had a, you know, legitimate deviation from what they would... Should normally be charged. They shouldn't... We shouldn't charge them for something that they don't actually use. I think that it should be there, and it should be allowable. But there were loopholes in that, and I want to make sure that we are setting this up in a way that will not provide similar loopholes that we then have to go back through and fix again. So is staff aware of that and in tune with that potential loophole, and are we overcoming the objection before it arises?
Again, Terry McHugh, Director, Environmental Services Department. Yes. I mean, I have... I expect to have a very high bar when it comes to entertaining alternate ideas. And in particular, I'd like to find a way to encourage the development community, particularly for residential areas, if they can guarantee to me that there'll be no irrigation, then it does have less of an impact. But the word guarantee is there. Installing Florida-friendly landscaping without a guarantee means it can be ripped out and something else can be put in tomorrow. So it would be... The standard would be not just for development, A. It's would I change my codes entirely? Right now, the capacity for water, we're proposing to drop it from 350 to 250 gallons per day. That's a weighted average based on all of our residences. Some of them irrigate, some of them don't. And you never can tell, even if they irrigate today, they might not irrigate tomorrow. So we find using a weighted average is the best one-number approach. If I had guarantees to justify a lower number, such that I would change those numbers, what I would essentially do for residences that irrigate becomes a higher number with higher impact fees. For ones that guarantee that they don't irrigate will be a lower number. But it would have to be enough evidence for me to change my policy to reflect that. It will not be one-offs for any individual development, which is a process that takes time.
Okay. And another, I think another... I'm sorry. But another important element that's here that was not in the alternative impact fees for schools or in any of the other alternative impact fee studies is, the proposal here is that we would monitor it and go back and recapture, and that wasn't what was present in the alternative fee protocols for the school impact fee. So there is, in effect, a guarantee here. If we see that they're actually using more capacity under this scenario, we could go back and charge a higher capacity.
Okay. And so do you have an automatic trigger, then, or are you going to have to have staff go back and manually review usages to see if they're within the original projected amounts?
We would develop automated methods to track consumption for groups that fell in this category.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Zimbetta?
I would just like to know what the take is on agricultural impacts, number one, and number two, how agritourism is going to fall into an agricultural or non-agricultural impact with some of these fees.
Might I ask, courtesy, I have a follow-up to the previous conversation, because this one's going to be a big one.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
While they think. Having sat in that chair before, I appreciate the time, the moment. I would like to shift the paradigm on the consideration, at least consider shifting the paradigm for the alternative capacity. The way we're doing this is government versus business. I actually think we should collect the fee and give it back when they actually execute to the lower capacity, as opposed to putting us in a collection mode from folks that may no longer exist, and that is additional work for staff. So I'd like to... I don't mind this, but shift the paradigm. We shouldn't be in collection mode. We should be in giving back, because that's a drop right to their bottom line, which is the incentive for doing it the way they're telling us they're going to do it.
I agree. Thanks for bringing that up for the record.
So when we're doing this, we're going to do it on a basis of, we collect the fee, then if they prove it, we get, you know, they get the fee back. Okay, Commissioner?
Just on that, I mean, I like the idea, but I just want to make sure legally that is allowed.
I'm never asking us to do anything illegal, just for the record.
I know that. I'm not insinuating that.
Thought I'd throw that in.
I just want to make sure that... I just want to make sure that our legal department looks at that.
Do you guys have an answer to Commissioner Zimbow's question?
I mean, for us, for any agricultural user, it's based on their impact. So, just like any other applicant from the water sewer perspective, they'd have to show to us what their demands are, and the impact fees will be based on that. So, in particular, for what size meter do you need, which would really drive what the impact fees is from a water sewer perspective. So, large agricultural firms, if they irrigate with their own water supply, then obviously they wouldn't be charged for that. It's the impact of any user on the water wastewater.
And fire and library would be based on square footage of the home?
Presumably, yes.
And that is captured, for the record, Paul Chippok. And for the fire and library fees, and for that matter, school and mobility fees as well, is tied into the building permit. That is the key document. So, that will set forth what the usage is. So, we would capture things at times of change of use and also the square footage.
But isn't it true that there are agricultural structures that don't require permits?
That is true. Again, that's at the state level and a state directive.
Because as you're probably aware, we've had this agritourism issue, which now it appears that no structure can be controlled by a local municipality, as long as it is somewhat related to an agricultural aspect, whether that be a soundstage, whether that be a dance hall, whatever it might be. So, I have some concerns. I'd like to know a little more about that aspect while we're having this discussion.
And again, it has to be part of a bona fide agricultural use, which means that they do have to have the
Two sheep and a goat.
... of agricultural usage on the property as verified by the property appraiser for the
Since this is questions and recommendations, I would suggest that both of you look into that and the new law that's coming through so that we can have the concerns of Commissioner Zimbow answered at the next down the line. Okay. Anyone else have any other thing? I have one, and that is, in any of these, we want to make sure we have an automatic trigger. So, we're not looking at impact fees that haven't been changed since 1992. I think we've all agreed with that, and we would see a much different type of increase or potential decrease if we did it every three years than if we're doing it every 30 years. So, that's something that I think all of us can agree with, including staff. And plus, the longer it takes for us to do that, the more our citizens are paying for the growth. All right. So, does anybody have anything else that they would to talk about on impact fees before we move on to the land developments? Okay, fine. I see that. Yes.
Sorry. Excuse me. Yes, we do have a little bit more of a presentation, just some discussion items to go through.
Please, I'm sorry.
If that's okay. Sure. For the record, again, Rebecca Hammack, Development Services Director. Following up on the consultant presentations, there were a few topics that we wanted to address with the board, and I think some of you have already briefly touched on them. And the first was, what you were just referring to, Commissioner Constantine, was the indexing of impact fees. Currently, we do have review cycles in the code for fire, libraries, and traffic, which will be mobility fees, and those are four-year review cycles. And so, the idea of indexing is also an option where you could include language in an ordinance to allow increasing index, or increasing the impact fees a certain percentage per year based on inflation. So, that is an option. And then, of course, like you were saying, and it was one of the recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Committee, to make sure that we are looking at the impact fees on a regular basis so there aren't large jumps. The other
Can I just stop there for?
Sure.
Does four years sound reasonable? Should it be three years? Should it be five years? Commissioner Hurd?
So, what I heard in that, which may not be accurate, Rebecca, is that either you're going to look at it with some frequency, or you're going to index it, and you're going to index it yearly.
Correct. So, it would be both. So, currently in the code, it requires you to look at it, if you want to do, like, to look at it every four years. So, we'd actually have to evaluate the fees and maybe get through a study process like we're doing now if we want to update the fees. So, that would happen every four years based on the current review cycles. And then also, if the board wanted to, we could include within the proposed ordinances to automatically index the fees every year and adjust them for inflation. So, that's separate from the
Up to 3% or 3%? Up to 3% based upon indexing, or indexing of inflation, or up to, or 3%?
I believe it's usually a max of 3% or 3.5%.
3% is an example for
Okay, I got you. Okay.
It's what we do with water and sewer.
Commissioner Zimbow?
I'll wait till it's
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were finished.
Thank you. So, to answer your question, Chairman, I am in favor of indexing. Not sure what that means in terms of the number or up to, so that's an entirely different discussion. But indexing to keep up with inflation, I mean, that's the reality of it, and to make sure that new development is paying its own way on an ongoing basis. I also am in favor of the review. I would, I think if you index, you don't need to pay for the review as often. So, I'll leave that up to your recommendation.
If I could make a comment on the indexing, we index for water and sewer fees, as you're aware, and there's a 3%, maybe 3% now, maybe 3.5%. And we look at that, though, every year on budget and don't necessarily go to the 3%.
Understand.
So, there is, I just want, for the benefit of the public, if you set a number, it doesn't mean you can't review that each fiscal year and maybe lower the number if the circumstances are appropriate for that.
So, the fact that that aligns to what we're doing to the existing citizens is nice.
And I think that based upon what we have done with water and wastewater, I think indexing is a good idea also. Based upon inflation, you know, however we do it. And if we're doing that, I think then four years would be sufficient. Commissioners Zimbow?
If I could just follow up on that, I'm sorry. But I just, I would strongly encourage you to consider indexing, because we do have provisions in the code now that says the board will review fees if they want to every certain number of years. And there hasn't been an appetite for a variety of reasons. If you index, you're forced to look at it every year. So, just something for you to
Well, I think we all, I think we agree that we should do
Agree that indexing is appropriate.
So, we don't have to worry about that one. That's a consent. And then the second one is four years. Is that okay with everybody? Three, five? With indexing, four years, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to weigh in on that.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Commissioner Zimbow.
As the county manager said, we've had in the past indexing for water rates, not our impact fees, for up to 3%. And it's also true that if we looked at 2004 to today, if we raised it annually 3.5% year, on average, we'd be at the same place. But what did that look like on a year-to-year basis? It took really big jumps in 2007 and 2010, when we got bonds, and then when that money was encumbered, to put in advanced water treatment. So, there's going to be drivers that aren't necessarily time-based that may drive future changes. For water sewer, my master plan will be done this summer. We also know, based on previous discussions this year, about alternate water supply and what changes they may have. So, yes, a routine basis is every four years or whatever, no later than, but also, if there's a driver that pushes the discussion earlier, we should have the latitude to be able to bring that to your attention.
I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Commissioner Zimbow?
Some of the points I was just about to get to. Number one, indexing makes sense. We're already doing it. I think that's a staff-level issue. If it's a policy review, then I think it should be done every three years, not four, because you will have some historic knowledge on this commission that otherwise you may lose. Just a point, which I personally found helpful when I came on the commission of those who had been here for a period of time that had historic knowledge, including our staff. So, maybe we want to look at, you know, staff level's already happening, policy level, whether that's three years, whatever everybody would think, but understanding that there are going to be bond issues that actually drive, as Mr. McHugh indicates, our ability to do certain things. And that may be, I'm sure staff looks at that every year, but from a policy level, when we look at that, we should be well-educated on what that bonding may mean. And if we have bonds that are no longer there, it may give us the ability to lower rates. And we should consider that likewise.
Sure.
Then Commissioner Zimbow? I agree with every comment that you've made, so I'm going to just try to put it out there so that the staff understands in putting together this ordinance, and if I get head shakes, we can move on. That, number one, we have index based upon, you know, every year, up to 3%. Looks like, I think we had 3.5%, you said, in the previous water and sewer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That will be something, we're not going to decide that today, but that will be something that, you know, you'll look at and come back to. Number two
Separate care. So, if we're doing indexing, it comes back just like water and sewer?
Just like water and sewer.
Every year.
Number two, I concur that we should all be embedded in this, and therefore, if it's every four years, there's going to be a couple or three commissioners, and it's always up on their election year. I think it should be three years. I think that's fair. And then the third thing is, is that based upon staff recommendation, if there's anything that's going to functionally change because of bonding or anything else, that needs to be in the ordinance that we can bring it back outside of the three years. Is that okay with everybody?
But otherwise, it's a staff-level review already annually.
Yeah. And they will, but like Commissioner Delory said, it still comes back to us like every year we vote on the water and sewer index. Okay. You guys got that? Now, let's move on to, I think, the accessory dwelling units, which is the next thing.
So, the next item is phasing of impact fees. And this was a question
I'm trying to move.
This could be rather, I'll try to do this rather quickly. And I included this just because we had some questions on phasing, and would the county consider phasing? And ultimately, I believe staff's recommendation is not to phase, mostly because we need the increases for our capital improvement programs and also because of the proposed legislation that's going through Tallahassee now, if approved, could ultimately impact how we adopt the fees in the future, and it's best to move forward with the whole increase.
And that's why I was trying to lay it out, Ms. Hammack, of what we all think we can agree with, and everybody shook their head. Okay.
Thank you. And the next item, our accessory dwelling units and affordable housing, and I can combine these two. And back to that consistency conversation, I do, we need to, staff is going to work with the consultants so that we can create a consistency throughout the proposed impact fees for accessory dwelling units and affordable housing units. There are some of the studies which provided, or proposed, separate impact fees for accessory dwelling units based on the multifamily rate, like a one- and two-bedroom multifamily rate. So, we're going to look at providing that throughout. We think that's probably consistent. Instead of charging a full single-family rate for an accessory dwelling unit, charge just the multifamily rate. And then also, if an accessory dwelling unit is being used for an affordable unit, then we could either provide a reduced rate or waive impact fees, or in the alternative, waive them and the county pay on behalf from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, those are some options that we wanted to get some direction from you on. And then for affordable housing, some of the impact fee studies, including mobility fee, provide a separate rate based on their NEXUS study for affordable housing. And of course, the Florida statutes does allow us to waive impact fees for legitimate affordable housing units where we could have an affordability period contract with the developer of those units, or the builder of that unit. So, and then that way, we could either waive them completely, or again, pay them on behalf of the builder through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. My understanding, though, is with water and wastewater, we would not be able to waive those based on a bonding language. So, those would have to be paid on their behalf.
As I think that we've all discussed, so I'm just going to kind of paraphrase what we've all said before, I think that we're willing to look at flexibility in that.
Okay.
Do you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you asking for feedback on each of those individual options, or are you just wanting a general sense of whether or not we're interested in options?
I mean, I would like some feedback if you have that now. That way, we can incorporate that into the proposed ordinance.
Okay. I thought maybe that was what you were trying to get at.
For one, I think that all of us, I'm going to, I believe that the ability to have the flexibility based on square footage, based on accessory dwelling units, based on paying it through the trust fund, I think all of those options should be available to us. And clearly, we know that water and wastewater, because of our bond covenants, we cannot do that.
And maybe some nexus on each of them, how you get to that and what qualifies for which one.
Because I think everybody would agree that we
In the ordinance.
We would want to ensure that it's going to stay affordable housing.
Correct.
Not it becomes, just, you know, just like anything else, you can have affordable housing today, and when those tax credits go out, all of a sudden, it becomes, you know, back to whatever else they want to charge.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's the reason why I'd like to at least get more information about the trust fund, because I think that will have more weight, particularly the issue you're discussing.
Yeah. As far as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is concerned, I'd like there to be some more stringent requirements be placed on someone before we would dip into those funds.
So, I guess the question is, do we want to provide a separate lower rate for affordable housing from standard, single-family? So, that's one option that we can do. And then the waiving of the impact fees, and then just provide that as an option and to be subsidized through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would, I think we should have, on those inquiries, whether it's in the ordinance or a exhibit, there should be, we should define how somebody gets them either waived or gets them reduced, whether the county pays it. There should be some criteria that I think we'll have to get with our community services people to understand where those lines need to be drawn versus not all affordable should have their fees paid.
You want a matrix.
Not all affordable should not pay. There should be a tiered or a certain level that we should rely upon, either an application process or proving up why they should be waived or reduced, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And if, I know we've talked about community land trust, in those scenarios, maybe it's a partnership where we're paying because it's going to be long-term affordability, and there's not going to be a profit level for those residents. All I'm saying is, there should be some defined process, and not everybody should qualify for
Not all affordable housing is
Just because they want to call it affordable housing.
Not all affordable housing is equal.
Correct.
And that's, you know, that's why I was talking about the flexibility.
Right.
We have to have criteria. Commissioner Delory?
And I would agree with everyone that's being set up here, but again, I'd like to get some information from the realtors, because they've been involved in this and other locations as well.
And just so you know, as part of the discussion that I had with them, they're looking at putting together a trust fund.
And that's why it's important for us to talk to them.
Which we could work together on. I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
So
Commissioner Hurd?
I haven't weighed in on this. I agree with everything that's been said with the paradigm that we don't make it so complicated that this absorbs a significant amount of staff time, and we're all dealing with legal about what we can do. This just cannot be that complicated. It's not fair to the business community that's trying to facilitate this, and it's not fair to our team or the taxpayers to have to pay for people to manage it. So, that all sounded exceptionally complicated. I like the matrix, but I'll just confess, I don't know why you need to pay for something from the trust fund that you're waiving. So, like, as simple as we can make it, the better it will be.
I think the reason that is, is there are certain things we can't waive under statute of bonding.
I heard that, but we were mixing and mingling it all together. So, very clear, easy to administer.
I would concur with Commissioner Hurd. I mean, that's why I think it needs to be defined and easy to follow, that not one-size-fits-all.
Yep. Okay. Got the direction?
Yes. Thank you.
Now, let's go on to land development. Now, let's go on to land development.
Sure.
Except, except I think I have to get to the citizens, unless you have one other thing.
Sure. And we may have already covered this, but just regarding the legislative, or the bills that are going through the legislature on the impact fees, and those are restricting certain percentages, increases for certain percentages. There is a retroactive, if the bill does ultimately get adopted and passed, there is a retroactive date included, back to January. However, there's also contradictory language within the proposed legislation stating that if you do a study, that you can adopt, you know, new impact fee rates. So we believe possibly the intent of the legislation was to prevent people from using old studies to adopt new impact fee rates. So of course, we'll have to see ultimately, you know, what happens.
And it's still moving in different directions. Commissioner Zimbauer?
Thank you. On that note, with that legislation pending, I'd like, from probably our legal team, a briefing on how or how that may not impact the Growth Management Act. It dates back to 1985, and how that all would, may play in on this as far as fee calculations and fee collection with levels of service and so forth. If the new legislation is going to impact any of that, I don't know. But if I could get a briefing on that, would be helpful.
And to be helpful, the thousand friends of Florida are doing an extensive study on that right now, just so you know. Anything else, Ms. Hammack, because I keep stopping you, I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. Is anything else on impact fees that we have to discuss right now?
No, other than that, we are planning, tentatively scheduled to bring an ordinance with Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration in May, as well the Board of County Commissioners at the end of May. And if, and if we do need to move back those dates, we could bring them in June.
The one thing that all of us knows, we want to make sure that it gets done on July 1st, because we don't really know what the impact is going to be on the legislation. Commissioner Zimbauer?
Just want to, real quick question, Ms. Hammack. Are you comfortable, believe you have direction from this board at this juncture to move forward?
Yes, I think so. Yes, I understand.
All questions answered?
Lot of questions to answer, but yeah.
Good, just want to make sure.
And just, and just for information purposes, we are working with Castleberry, Altamont, and Winter Springs on the inter-local agreements with, for fire.
Thank you. Okay, I see, Ms. Hammack, you would like to come up, is that correct? I do think that's you. I sometimes can't tell who people are with the masks.
Yep, it's me, in disguise.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this before? Okay.
I'll pass you this as soon as I'm finished, because I made some notes on it, and then some of them aren't relevant anymore, because you all covered them. Nancy Harmon, 752 Pioneer Range, Geneva, Florida. I have to say, this has been a stimulating discussion, very good learning for, you know, citizens that have no clue. And so some of my questions or a few of my comments may be like, you have no clue, let me help you. So the first thing, I'm going to go back to what we talked about last, or what you talked about last was on wastewater and fees. And you, and there was a conversation about affordable housing and ensuring that there was the ability for those folks to be able to pay their fee or not. Well, I have a question for you about seniors. And the reason why I ask this, because my mother lives in my house, it's a rental in Sanford, and her income doesn't go up. She's on a government retirement, and I think last year she got a 1% fee increase. So I would ask that somewhere in this document, that there also be an opportunity for seniors who are on very low income to be able to file for a reduction in fee or some form of relief from the fees that they might have to expend as the county would increase them, or if they can't pay them now. I mean, there's, there's a lot of people who, it's hard, they make the choice between eating and flushing their toilet. And a lot of them, I can tell you, do not flush their toilet on a regular basis, and I know that's like TMI, but that, that's the reality, and it's a health issue. It can become a public health issue if they don't bathe. All of these things, because they can't afford the sewage fees that they're being, having to pay. So that's my first request, is that that would be considered in the ordinance. The other question that I have is, in the area of the wastewater, and it kind of, this would go to land development, but I need to ask about it now, because it came up as this alternative to developers. Is there a means that this commission could actually land development code, require homeowners' associations to allow natural landscaping and get away from the St. Augustine and the cost of watering? That, I mean, you see it, I go by, and even if it's affluent water, they are still pumping water on, in the middle of the day, you see the fire departments doing, you see a lot of places are just pumping out water. And so in my thought, we have a lot of beautiful, natural resource-like landscaping that would be so beautiful versus St. Augustine grass and the chemicals and the fertilizer. So that's just a thought that would go with the wastewater, if you're talking about reduction of services, you're anticipating a reduction of like 100, or what is it, you go from 350 to 250 on the basis of, this year, we're not watering, but last year, we did. This year, we had rain, last year, we didn't. I mean, it's that kind of stuff, but, so those, those in the watering area, wastewater. And then on libraries and the fire departments, I know we've done some new fire departments. I don't remember when the last library was built. So my question is, when you're looking at the impact fees, are those fees considering the age of the buildings, the maintenance of those buildings? And of that, is it, does it make sense to maintain those buildings versus rent a better building someplace else, or purchase a better facility someplace else, so that the reduction, there would be a reduction in cost for maintenance of those facilities to the community? So those are my questions and comments.
Thank you. Very good question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I want to make sure we're clarifying for the public that the impact fees are only going to be assigned to new construction. So the only way a low-income senior would have to pay this is if they are building a new home, or, now granted, I know the fees are being passed on by the builders, I understand that, but it's, this is over the life of the product that these are, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, thank you.
Staff can do a better job of explaining it, but I just, I don't want, I don't want anyone who's listening to this conversation to think that next year, we're going to start assessing people $3,000 or $2,000, that's like not what's happening.
Okay, so that was, thank you for clarifying that, because that's where I had some confusion. So in that thought, there is this guesstimation that this estimates, some of these are going out to 2030. What is our estimate for development between now and 2030? And how do we know that the development and the number and size of square footage bathrooms has been considered based on the way this county's growing and the number of PDs that are being allowed? And so that's my other question. If it's, if it is on new development, then I would question how we, how the estimation will be between now and the next four years even.
Let me give a stab at that.
Yeah.
Number one, I understand what you're talking about with water, because we do have an index, and it will increase percentage-wise. So, so I don't want to misunderstand, there is that in water rates, water sewer rates. On the other thing, when it comes, we calculate, these studies, and this is why we do it, we calculate these based upon what the impact of a home and/or a single, a unit in an apartment or condominium would cost us, or what their fair share is.
Okay.
So as we grow, there's going to be more impact. And the, the study is to ensure that each one of those units is paying for their fair share. So whether we had 100 or 1,000 increases in units, it's, it's the theory that each one of those units are paying for their impact on what's happening. So it doesn't really matter how many are growing. That's a question of growth management that all of us are concerned about also, but that, that doesn't affect the impact fee study. Commissioner Zimbauer?
And to Chairman's point, if you review the Growth Management Act of 1985 here in the state of Florida dictates what we have to do as a local government in maintaining a certain level of service for those things. And the only way we can do that is, to Commissioner Lockhart's point, is it is the new impacts. If we're maintaining a level of service with what inventory we currently have with libraries and so forth, and fire service, when that level of service begins to drop, we're charged with ensuring that it's paid for through that new development, that level of service is maintained. So that sort of drives what we have to do, or should be doing.
So then at some point, if the level of development is reduced, because we stopped building so much because of our space, then, on the other hand, it would come back to, how would you make, pay for the resources, the facilities, and things of that nature in the, in the end?
So the good point, so if you get to a point where you have built to a certain point, and you don't have economic development, well, that's a real easy answer. That's higher taxes on the existing residents.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Or the same level of services, or, or get more efficient.
Can, can I just clarify that?
Yeah.
These fees are to address the capital needs associated with the impact, not the ongoing maintenance of the impact.
That's correct.
That's covered through the taxes that are paid once they're in the game, once they're living in the dwelling, or running the business out of the business.
Right.
So that conversation was two conversations at once. If development stops, if development stops or slows down, when development stops or slows down, there is no immediate need for additional capital outlay to expand facility, library, fire, et cetera. So, so this is a self-contained. By the fact that we have not looked at this for this many years means that our existing citizens, our existing taxpayers are footing the burden of new development. This is a good thing to have this change. So, so I don't want that to get lost in the conversation. Did I say anything that's wrong?
Very good point, Commissioner.
Okay. County manager is nodding.
No, Terry. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Come on, Terry.
Just to, to add on to Commissioner Herr's response for water sewer, looking at the difference between the proposed rates and the current rates, if you apply that difference to the annual growth over the last six years, it's $2.5 million...
$2.5 million.
...that our customers are paying for, which is reflected in their rates.
That's what we're trying to...
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to make that statement directly for the record.
That's why we're all consistently good with this. This is not increased taxes, as some people tried to.
And just to clarify, based on the comment that was made regarding seniors, and there's a user rate that everyone's charged for utilization, their water bill, their sewer bill, and then there's the impact fee rates, which is charged to new development to help fund infrastructure needs to accommodate growth. So this is not impact user rates.
And I think we were very clear on that, too. Okay, Clint, is there anybody else that needs to speak on this impact fees issue in cyberspace?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to land development code.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We are approaching a 12 o'clock hour.
Yes, we are.
Can we discuss this in the afternoon? The afternoon should go pretty quick.
We could. Let's see how far we can get to 12 o'clock, and then we'll see. Okay. Because I, because Ms. Hammack said that she thinks she can cover it in 10 minutes.
We've got seven minutes.
Ms. Hammack, go ahead.
I'll get done in seven minutes, but go ahead.
And we have a number of the public here, too.
I understand that.
Let's see how much we can get through. Let's just go. And then we can always bring it on after this. We also have people here that want to talk about this.
Okay. I know we have a limited time today, so there were just a few sort of hot-button issue items that we wanted to bring up that staff feels like that we can address separate from the update, the LDC update that our consultant is assisting with. And that first issue is the special exception requests. Currently, special exception requests, which are not an outright permitted use within our zoning designations, they are listed as uses that may be appropriate in that zoning category, as, as long as they meet certain special exception criteria. So currently, those requests go to the Board of Adjustment for approval. And the Board of Adjustment currently has final authority unless that decision is appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. And there have been some of those in the recent past, where the Board of Adjustment has made a decision, and those decisions have been appealed to you. So there's been discussion about adjusting that process, such that special exception requests would then, would rather than go into the Board of Adjustment, go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they would make a recommendation, and then that recommendation would move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. We did compare that to other jurisdictions, and currently, in our comparison, we are the only jurisdiction where the Board of Adjustment has final authority on special exception approvals. Majority of the other jurisdictions do go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where that recommendation does move forward to the Board of County Commissioners or their city council.
On this issue, then, I think we've all talked about this before. I think this is a good recommendation. Does anybody else disagree with that?
Nope.
Okay, then you've got your answer on that one.
So we will amend the code, so that it will now go to P and Z, and then to BCC.
Next?
So we're similar to rezones. So the next issue is fences, and this is sort of a multifaceted issue. We have, currently, the code only has zoning regulations for residential fences. And one of the issues that has come up is that we don't have regulations for fences within agricultural zoning districts, within commercial zoning districts, and industrial. So we are proposing to create regulations that would also have, would create zoning regulations for those zoning districts, not just residential zoning districts. Our code also doesn't address materials or fencing on vacant properties, so we are proposing language for those things as well.
Does anybody have any problem with that?
Yes.
Okay. Speak.
Well, I think, first of all, I'm a, I'm a less regulation girl, as opposed to a more regulation girl, so the fact that we're talking about adding more regulations, I think is something we need to really look very closely at, and the purpose for it. In an, in an agricultural area, whether someone is living on a property or not, putting up fencing is typically something that happens without, without having the time that is needed to get a building permit and go through all of the machinations that's required. When, when you need to fence in your property, you need to fence it in. And, or if there's been a storm damage and a tree has come down, and you need to get your fence repaired, because the cow's going to get out, you don't have time to come down to the county and get a permit. So I, I really think that there is, I'm very concerned about expanding this discussion.
No, I understand, and that's one of the things that we're looking at, is differentiating bona fide agricultural uses versus, versus single-family residential subdivisions that have A1 zoning. Because currently, in our code, in section 30.22, it lists all of the residential zoning districts, and it says anything that's referred to residential zone, residential use, is this is, these are the zoning districts that that applies to, and it does not list A1. But yet, we have plotted residential subdivisions, Alloqua is an example, that are zoned A1, so technically, they're exempt from our fence regulations. And so we were looking at possibly differentiating between, if you're a bona fide agricultural use versus a residential subdivision that happens to have A1 zoning.
Okay. So let me follow up on that, then. The bona fide agricultural use, how will you determine that? What is your plan for determining a bona fide agricultural use?
Yeah, and see, and then that's even, I agree, then there's gray area there, because technically, a bona fide agricultural use is you have the G1 classification from the property appraisers, but of course, you could have horse farms and that don't have a G1 classification, or somebody that might have a barn and a few horses. So those are issues that I think we're going to have to explore and look at.
Yeah, but that's why, why I quickly said no, because I think there's more conversation to be had about that.
And yes, horse farmer, what can we do?
So, this, this is going to, to need more work in, in multiple ways. Not only what's already been discussed, and I agree, less regulation is good, but there are areas where we need to either define existing regulations or have some consistency of what is not, and let's face it, in, in my district, and I'm sure in Commissioner Delory's in the eastern rural area, demographics are changing considerably. It's no longer, you know, live and let live, like it was years ago when all this first started. We now have individuals that don't want to see a bunch of cars parked in the front yard, and don't want to see a chain-link fence that's five foot in the front yard and 10 foot in the backyard and half-broke... foot in the backyard, and half-broken-down things. The point being is, that's going to be one issue, but also, the bona fide agriculture operation is yet another. And you have certain animals that require a certain type of fencing for agriculture, or if you are an equestrian, we have to make sure we cover all of those aspects of what, and engage those individuals from the community, our equestrian community, our agricultural folks, because what works for a cow doesn't work for a horse. Well, it does, but it's not really a good thing to do. But, we need to consider all that, and I know all of us have been hearing the agritourism drumbeat, and what's going on in Tallahassee, as well of our constituents, and hopefully, we're going to get to the bottom of that. But, the tax collector, not the tax collector, but the property appraiser is the one that really dictates whether it's a bona fide agricultural exemption or not. And so, we're going to have to have a conversation with our property appraiser as well.
Commissioner Lockhart?
Well, and that's, and I think that's even a sticking point, is I'm not sure that someone should have to have a bona fide agricultural use on their property, and that A1 does, that A1 exemption, in order to be exempt from having to get a permit to put a fence on their property that they use for agricultural purposes. I mean, we all know the hoops that you have to jump through to get that ag exemption, because it's, I mean, it's just not an easy thing. That should not mean, then, that a family who has a couple of cows, then, is now, because they aren't a bona fide ag operation, they have to come down and get a permit before they can repair the fence, because the cow's going to get out. I just feel like we're really walking in some tedious area, and we've got to really look at all the potential consequences of this.
Chairman?
Commissioner Delory?
Thank you. All a lot of great points. Rebecca, what's the issue that you're trying to address?
Well, there's issues where sometimes people will place fences on their neighbor's property, and which a lot of times, it just becomes a civil issue. But then, it's also where we have A1 zoning on single-family residential subdivisions that are not being used for agricultural purposes.
And you also have it in county right-ofways, for that matter.
Yeah, and that's another issue. Yeah, and that's a very good point. We do have issues where people are placing fences, because they may not be required to pull a permit, they've actually put a fence in county right-ofway.
So, listening to some of the concerns of the commissioners, treading lightly, you believe that you can separate those two issues?
Yes, we will look at and see if there is a way to do that, yes. Because I agree, I mean, I think even if you're not a bona fide agricultural use, you can be using property for agricultural reasons. You're not putting up your white picket fence, or...
Commissioner Hurd, did you have a onto this issue?
Yeah, so, I think if we can separate those, it comes back similar to the way this did in a future work session, so that we can work through that before it gets to vote. And I, at the time that it comes back, I would like to know what the backlog is in permitting, and what additional resource we think we need to, A, maybe eliminate the backlog if one exists, which I hear we do have one, and what additional burden this would add to that, so that we improve our service to the community. I don't want to maintain existing.
And Commissioner Zimbawa, on this issue?
Just a quick question. Are we still doing the fast-tracking phone-in fence permitting?
Yes, we are.
So, literally, it's hours, right?
Right, you can come in and get it same day.
That's what I thought.
Not if you're a homeowner. No, that fast-tracking is only available for commercial. As a residential homeowner, to come in and get a fence permit, I have to physically come down here and get a permit. It's not available to me online.
No, right, but you can come in, and we'll process it same day.
Same day.
Okay.
All right. Let's stop there.
I'll check on that.
Let's stop there. Ms. Hammack, for only planning purposes, timing purposes, how much more do we, I mean, how many issues do you have?
Just really, a couple more, I guess, if you want to go through them quickly.
And we have two people that wish to speak. Do I have the permission of the other members to try to finish this, or do we want to stop this and go? I have one saying yes. So that we can keep the two citizens that want to speak, we can get it all done now, let's try to make sure that we do this as quickly as we can. So, go ahead, Ms. Hammack. We're going to continue on.
And the other issue that we are hoping to address through proposed language is the corner lot fencing issue. You've seen some appeals come to you from the Board of Adjustment. So, we are working on language, so that the setback, currently, the setback for a corner lot, so your side street setback is the same as your front yard setback, and a lot of people are having problems with meeting that setback requirement, and wanting to put the fence closer to the road or the sidewalk. So, we're looking at language where we would maintain a five-foot setback, as long as you're outside of the sight-distance triangle, and as long as traffic engineering finds it acceptable.
We all agree with that, I think. Yes, next?
So, the next issue is setbacks on water bodies. Currently, in the code, the only structures that have a setback from the mean-high water line or natural high water line are pools and screen enclosures. And we have, by policy, required fences, privacy fences, to be also out of that 25 foot, or 25 feet up from the mean-high water line, however, that's not specifically stated in the code. So, we are looking for direction, and whether the Board agrees that we should apply that 25-foot setback to all accessory structures, including fences.
And commissioners, I will tell you, I've had some issues in my district on some lakes, where people have actually put structures, bamboo, in the water, blocked others' views of the lake, and, you know, basically, because they got mad at each other. And so, I think that, you know, I think this is a reasonable recommendation for quality of life for individuals, that, you know, we set some sort of standards here.
Well, so, what about the neighbor that has dogs, or horses, or some other animal on their property, that you don't want getting on the adjacent property? And of course, you want to keep them forbidden into the lake and going onto the neighbor's property. How would you handle that?
So, there would be a gap. So, an animal could potentially, even if you fence all the way directly to the shoreline, an animal could potentially go into the lake and swim around.
Sure. But if you want to maintain the animal, if I wanted to maintain my horses in my yard, and not go over to Commissioner Hurd's yard on the lake, I would have to fence all sides, so I've got to decide whether I can fence all the way to the lake, or more pasture grazing area, or whether I've got to bring that fence back 25 feet, or whatever it is, because I can't go that close to the lake, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so, what we're proposing would be 25 feet from the mean-high water line. I think you'd want them that close to the lake, anyway, for water quality, but the...
My horses go swimming, with me on them.
Commissioner?
So, this is, though, for structures exceeding six feet. So, I could have a four-foot high fence, or a five-foot high fence.
Correct.
I just can't take a six-foot high fence all the way down to the water line. But I could do a fence that is lower than six feet down to the water line. Is that correct?
That's an option, yes, you could.
Okay. So, the only thing that is making this 25-foot setback come into play is if it's exceeding six feet in height?
Yes, that's currently what we're proposing, yes.
Well, it says exceeding six feet, so I'm thinking six foot and a quarter, or should we say six foot and higher? Because people like me will split that hair.
So, you're not going to jump in your horse six feet? No.
I'm not.
I just wanted to clarify.
Not anymore. Okay. One of the things that happened is, I think that, you know, there have been where people, as you've indicated, would put fences in that are obstructing the view that are much higher than six feet. So, that's what you're trying to get at here.
Yes, there's two things. There's not only the fencing, but there's also vegetation. So, because we, because if you can't, you know, build a fence up to the shoreline, then people will choose to plant a hedge or bamboo. We have instances where people, you know, have 25-foot-high bamboo planted all the way up to the shoreline, and then the neighbors are complaining and saying, well, that just, that, you know, basically is an opaque fence, and acts as a fence, and they're blocking my view of the lake. And so, part of the purpose of this work session is, is the Board interested in creating regulations, so that we would have a setback for vegetation as well?
And the staff, from what I'm understanding, the staff has seen these concerns.
Oh, yeah.
They're low-flying, low-hanging fruit, and they're trying to address it.
Oh, we've had them here at our board meetings, one neighbor complaining against the other.
So, is it all right for them to pursue looking at this and coming back with recommendations? That's all they're asking for right now?
I'd like to see situations of awareness, so I can actually understand.
Okay.
I have no problem with bringing back something for us to review, and give us some examples. And I know we've had a couple where neighbors have complained they didn't want this, and didn't want that, when they come in, and it was going for a special exception.
And as Commissioner Lockhart said, it's just exceeding six feet. Yeah. Okay. Other things, Ms. Hammack?
No, that's it.
Okay. Wow. All right, now, so I've got two citizens that wish to speak, Mr. Holden, Phil Holden? Come on in. Come on up, sir. And I know you've had concerns about some of this in the past, because I've heard from you, sir, so...
Well, I have, and thank you very much for opportunity to speak.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Philip Holden, 5715 Oak Hollow Lane, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. We live on a five-acre parcel that's zoned A1. We recently bought the parcel next to us, because my daughter intends to come back to Florida. She grew up here, got a good education, wants to raise her kids here. She's got two horses, so we're involved with that. I'd like to start off, you've got supposedly three minutes, go through this quickly. There's an economic freedom index that's published every year. The United States has slipped from 18 to 20 in economic freedom, behind several former Soviet countries and South American countries. And the reason for that, established in there, are, among other things, government regulations, zoning, eminent domain expansion, and the difficulty in starting and running a business. One example that I know of, Florida used to have a very onerous vehicle inspection requirement. The cost benefits weren't there, and Florida abolished the inspection system. I haven't seen, you know, a large influx of unsafe vehicles on the road. Apparently, the cost-benefit analysis worked. I'd like to see cost-benefit analysis here. The other thing, for the past 50-plus years, there's no fencing requirements for areas owned agricultural. If there's trigger events, we should address those trigger events, and not just a blanket, more regulations. Doesn't appear to be a crisis. If there's a change to be made, whether it's waterfront, whatever, I would expect to see a cost-benefit analysis. The building process, as the Commissioner mentioned, is not only expensive, but it's very time-consuming. In terms of coming up here, I recently got a permit to tie down a shed, playhouse on my property, kid's playhouse. Took six weeks to get the building permit, required three trips up to the building department to get it. It's just ridiculous. There's also a cost involved with that. If you're going to get a survey to do a fence, surveying the five acres, last estimate I got was $1,200, but they can't do it for another year. There's no backlog on survey. The other thing I'd like to bring up is that we use terms, natural water body. Is that a pond that's on my property? Or is that a named lake? Is it a named lake that has multiple owners? I don't think that there should be restrictions, just because I have a pond on my property, whether I can put a fence around it to keep the horses out, or keep other animals out. The other issue that should be brought up, I think, is the issue of grandfathering. If we already have these fences, the people have to tear them down. And you get into another issue, where currently, there's an ag exemption, and then the owner survives the property. No more ag exemption, do we have to tear down those buildings and fences? And if another owner comes back, they sell a property, another owner comes and gets the ag exemption, you know, it's a lot of seesaw back and forth. We got along fine with no requirements for fences, building permits in A1 area, and I don't know that we need to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Thank you.
All good points.
We will, I see copious notes being taken. Ms. Haller, Cindy Haller. And really, Ms. Harmon, again?
I love you.
You know, these people that sneak in and want to bring in their thing so they can talk last, we should switch it around and have them go first. Go ahead, Ms. Haller. You're cold, I see.
Cindy Haller, 1731 Beacon Drive, and I'm shivering. Okay, so, anyway, I would like, I know the LDC presentation, they just touched on a couple of topics, but I would really like to have Ms. Hammack and the staff look into redefining definitions for net buildable. And, I mean, there's some other thoughts I have, but anyway, I've got to go, I have an appointment today, but thank you.
Without taking your time, I just want you to know, that dive is going to happen. All of those things, we've made this our number-one priority this year. As I said earlier, she's trying to take that low-hanging fruit that has, you know, continuous little problems that have come up, and try to take, address them right away. So, what you're asking for will be done.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. And sorry, it's cold. We're trying to come up with the balance here. It doesn't seem to be working. Ms. Hammond?
It's a matter of, everybody's hormones are different. And conversations stimulate the blood pressure, which stimulates the temperature of people's bodies. Nancy Harmon, 752 Pioneer Way, Geneva, Florida. Don't fence me in, and don't fence me out.
Thank you very much.
Okay? The other thing is, the other concern I have, too, is on the land development code changes, if it would be possible that these things could be presented in a, well, for instance, you were talking about the PowerPoints. There are no PowerPoints, so I have no idea what this was going to be about today. So, I couldn't even prepare myself if I wanted to. I couldn't find it on the agenda. Thanks. It wasn't. I just looked at it again.
I'm going to...
Anyway, if you could just, because I just go to the meetings in Agenda Seminole County, and it just has the comment sheet. So, do I have to go to 80, do I have to go to the PDF and download the whole thing?
Yeah, you have to open the attachments.
Okay, so, maybe a note for stupid people like me, or people that...
Or the live one, you go on there and hit the blue highlighted text, it should take you to the documents.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to repeat that I think that Ms. Hammack was trying to address A1 zoning that is single-family homes right now. So, keep that in mind, everybody, when we talk about ag.
It's not A5, it's not A10.
It's not A5, it's A1 that are being acted as single-family homes.
In the urban area.
In the urban areas.
Yeah, because I think that's, to that point, I don't think what a lot of people understand, there's A1 really in what I would call...
Heathrow.
Yeah, exactly, a very suburban area.
District 5 has all of it.
Right. Now, it's easy, it's easy for us to say, well, a lot of those have HOAs that dictate what can be built and what can't be built, but some of them do not. So, I think that's what Ms. Hammack is trying to address.
Just like some of them say they only want St. Augustine grass, which takes up much more.
Right.
Okay, and we don't control, we can't control, you know, what HOAs do from here. Okay, let's, Commissioner Delory and everybody else, we all want to take a break. It's 12:20, we're going to come back at 1:30. We've gotten through the entire work session. And Ms. Hammack, I just want to thank you very much for moving that very quickly with me. I appreciate it very much. Everybody else, oh, by the way, Clint, do we have anybody that wants to comment on that one in the cyber?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we're going to recess until 1:30.